Please, our comment.
Recording in progress.
Hey, good evening. It is February 4th and we were going to call the Groton Town Council meeting to order at 6:31 PM. Clerk Melendez, would you like to do the roll call?
Here.
Gajewski?
Present.
Jones?
Here.
McBride?
He's unable to make it.
Merritt?
Here.
Parker?
She is unable to make it.
Pacino?
He is on his way.
Ross?
Here.
And Mia Franco?
I am here. Okay. Thank you. Up first is salute to the flag. Would you all please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first item is recognition, awards and memorials. We have 2025-96 Black History Month proclamation. Counselor, this was requested by Counselor Parker, but she's unable to make it this evening. Counselor Rusk, would you like to take that one?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, mayor. From the office of the mayor in the town of Groton, Connecticut, proclamation, proclamation recognizing Black History Month. Whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual and political development. And whereas Black History Month grew out of the establishment in 1915 of Negro History Week by Carter G. Woodson and the Association for the Study of African American Life and History. And whereas since the mid 1970s, US presidents have issued proclamations supporting the Association for the Study of African American Life and History's themes to celebrate African Americans' many achievements, culture and history. In 2025, Black History Month will highlight the varied history and life of African American arts and artisans. And whereas the observ-- I'm sorry, whereas the observance of Black History Month calls our attention to the continued need to battle racism and build a society that lives up to its democratic ideals. And whereas the town of Groton continues to work towards becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens are respected and recognized for their contributions to the community, the state, the country and the world, now therefore be it resolved that the Groton Town Council does hereby proclaim February 2025 to be Black History Month and encourages all citizens to celebrate the varied history and life of African American arts and artisans. Dated on Groton, Connecticut, this first day of February 2025, signed by Rachel Franco, Mayor of the town of Groton.
Thank you. Okay, up first, we have our public hearing. Let me grab my little, my little notes. I'm sorry. Receipt of public petitions, comments and concerns. This is the portion of the council agenda where the council welcomes comments from the public. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or as directed by the mayor, and if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Town counselors will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation. All presentations shall be made from the lectern and should include the speaker's name and address for the record. Up first, we have Frank Norski.
Good evening, counsel. Frank Norski, 60 Kings Highway in Groton. Also, public knowledge, I'm also the chairman of the Athletic Fields Task Force. I was here last week on your last meeting on the 28-ish. And there was a presentation by the AFTF concerning the fields going forward. You were presented spreadsheets with cost analysis and a lot of wonderful information. What I sat in the back of the room and thought in my mind was that part of the issue that some of the counselors had was that the lack of support by people that were going to meetings. And I think what wasn't explained at the time was that part of that was that of the 50 people that were at the meeting, some of those 50 people were representing three or 400 people. So I was able to learn about the public forum, which I'll be honest, I didn't know about. So that was great. And I reached out to those folks who were intimately involved with using the fields in the area and the users today, the users tomorrow, the users from years ago to come and speak if they were, just to let them know about this public forum. And I think what you'll find is there's a few of my new best friends out here to give their opinions. Really, my goal is to make sure the council understands that I know that you're going into budget sessioning and I know how you spoke about that, which I'm all about. But I just would like people to understand that we want this issue front and center. We can't let this go any farther. Our fields at the high school are literally embarrassing to the rest of the public. I went to a couple of football games the last couple of years and to stand there and know nobody there, which is okay with me, but seeing visiting teams kind of chuckle at the facility, it kind of, kind of breaks my heart a little bit. And I think that's a part of why I joined this committee or thankfully was elected to be part of this committee. So again, my, my thought is to keep this going forward. I would like the council to keep it in their mind and to understand the importance of it. And anything that, that we can do is, again, I'm speaking on behalf of myself, not really the, the task force. This is just me kind of finding out what's going on. But I want it kept forward. I want it in the front foot. And my goal is that we can do something by the end of the year and let's, let's, let's take all this to the people and let them decide what, where we are and where we stand, what we want to do going forward. So thank you very much. If I'm good, then I'm good. Good? Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Up next is Matt Brown.
Hey, council members. So Matt Brown, 153 Daniel Brown Drive. You can tell from my accent, I'm not originally from Groton. I've actually been in town for 18 years. But I just wanted to speak in support of Frank and the great work that he's doing on the Athletic Fields Task Force. I'm kind of speaking on behalf of a company that I run. I'm the chief operating officer for Community Athletic Solutions. We do a lot of soccer programming in town. We do all the soccer camp programming in town. We work directly with the town soccer program where we support staffing and programming. And being a town resident, having kids in the program and being passionate about the development of kids through sport, completely echo everything that Mr. Norski has just said. We definitely need to enhance, improve, support the athletic fields, the infrastructure, whatever we can do to put it out there. We, we know that through just, you know, me being uniquely involved in soccer, the opportunity to enhance the infrastructure that we have would make a massive difference, not just in the lives of young children, but the economic impacts that that can have for the town is immeasurable. There's going to be some other comments tonight that can lay the groundwork to that. But there's huge, huge opportunity that the town is just missing out on right now. So wanted to speak on behalf of that and just, you know, throw my weight, whatever weight that we can do to push that in the right direction and I appreciate your time. Thanks.
Thank you. Hazel Levine.
Thank you, council members. I'm Hazel Levine and I live at 24 Godfrey Street in Mystic. I'm glad for an opportunity to speak tonight for a brief minute. I have only lived here for six years, but Groton is where my husband and I are military and we decided to settle here. And one of the reasons why we decided to settle here is because we are, we love to be outdoors and we love to play sports. So the first thing I did to integrate myself in the community was to start playing pickup soccer with the adult pickup league that plays on the town fields at Aquanic. And I started making friends. And that's very important for how I became integrated into this society here. And my, my husband as well, he plays frisbee on those fields. And so when they're not being used by youth athletics, people like myself are out there exercising and staying healthy and it's really important for our way of life. And then in addition to that, I contribute to the community because I am on the board for the youth soccer club and I'm also the fields manager for the club and I do all the practicing and game scheduling. And I do it all volunteer and it is so much work because, especially in the season we're about to come into, spring season, which isn't traditionally a soccer season, we just don't have access to many fields and I juggle. Some nights I have coaches that have to change fields different parts of the night just so that they can have a practice for their youth two nights a week. So I'm very passionate about these fields being improved and I really believe in the quality of life will help this community and myself. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. Raul Lopez.
Hi, I'm Raul Lopez, 286 Judson and Mystic. I too, like the previous people that came up, am a transplant to Groton. I've only been living here about three years. We moved up from Texas and one of the first things we kind of did when we came in here was we signed my daughter up for soccer. She's 11 now. She was about eight when she came here, never touched the ball, didn't know what she was doing. And the level of confidence, the, the bonds she's made, the, she's a completely different person than she was. She came here not knowing anybody. She has friends, family, I myself. Now I'm also on the board with Groton Soccer Club. My daughter plays for two teams alongside Hazel and her daughter as well. And I also see from the other end of the spectrum with somebody like Hazel who has to deal with all the difficulties with the fields, being able to get enough room for these kids to be able to get what they need. I think it's such a valuable opportunity for them to give kids here in this area what they want. So they don't have to go out other places and find it. I think one of the biggest issues sometimes you have is trying to figure out where are things, where are they are? And then you're losing these kids to other towns because they don't have those resources here or they don't have the capabilities or in some cases, we don't have enough fields to have enough teams to give all the kids these opportunities and kids lose out the potentials that they can get. So, no, I think it's very valuable. I think there's a lot of things in there that these fields would give towards our kids. And for me personally, I think for the kids, it's the most important thing that they can have. So, thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Tom Butler.
Good evening, council. Tom Butler, 105 Ensign Drive. And to continue the theme, I was not born here. I am, as well as being a proud Mystic resident for the past 16 years, I'm here tonight representing the local nonprofit premier soccer club, Southeast Soccer Club. We proudly attract players from the full Southeast District of Connecticut as well as the southern area of Rhode Island. We currently have 509 players in the club aging from five to 23. And 11% of those players live in Mystic, Groton and Noack. I believe two of them are here tonight. In terms of our coaching staff and our management, 36% of our coaches live in one of those three towns. 31% of our management live in those three towns. Right now, it's painful for me to drive out of Mystic and Groton area and drive 15 minutes down the road to use other towns' fields. For context, as a club, in a year, we pay just over $247,000 in field usage fees to other towns and other locations. We are not tied to any of those locations because our players are from so many different towns. We're not a town program. We don't have to stay in one town. I would love nothing more, for personal reasons, to not have to drive half an hour, 45 minutes to use fields when we, in theory, could have a phenomenal infrastructure in this area. We play as a club, we play 303 games a year. We have over 1,100 practices a year across our teams. Of those 303 games, our opponents not only come from within Connecticut. We play teams from Rhode Island, Massachusetts, New Hampshire, Vermont and Maine. And a lot of those families, when they come down to Connecticut to play, will stay for the weekend and bring an awful lot of revenue to other towns where they're currently traveling and playing. And finally, I just wanted to note that as a club, we have a goal of graduating over 50% of our athletes to go on and play at the collegiate level. And a big part of that is inviting colleges from all over the country to come and watch our games and practices. So just recently, we used the facilities at Mitchell College and we had 17 coaches from across the country fly in and watch our players and again, stay in the New London area and not necessarily this area. So those are some numbers and I am fully in support and speaking for those 509 players. We're all in support of a new field infrastructure within this local area. So, thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Eric Whitman.
Good evening, everybody. Eric Whitman, 15 St. Paul Court, Groton. I'm involved with several youth organizations here, mainly with the Groton Mystic Falcons. I coach, volunteer, do both, everything. And I'm a president here, so I'll let her talk about them. I'm also the president and program coordinator for the Southern London County Mutiny. We spring football clubs, expanding this football. We were a program that started during COVID to give all the high school kids in the area a team and a program to play on when the state shut all the football down. So we started out struggling for field uses. I've been coaching and running programs on the Groton fields since I moved here in 2011. Multiple times, I've had to end games and events because we just run out of daylight. So we're trying to shove all, all these programs onto these handful of usable fields. And it's not fair to the kids. After the first two years here, I ended up driving my own children to Stonington to play Pop Warner, partially affected by the conditions of the practice and the game fields here. Almost considered buying a house there and staying in, staying in that town and staying in that program, but ended up not doing, doing that. I like it here, don't want to leave here. We're currently battling scheduling. We have to, when we do get it scheduled, we have to share the space with two or three other groups at the same time, which makes it really ineffective not doing anything for the kids. And I'm currently trying to get 70 kids out just for, not even a practice, but just like a field day fun pickup game type environment, just to get the kids off. And can't get any time. And the fields are under repair, shut down, just what little air is not available and just not conditioning. You know, a couple of nice turf fields would go a long way in making us able to, you know, deal with this problem year round. And right now, you know, obviously, you know, you don't want to get a bunch of people out there when the fields are all wet and frozen solid and stuff like that. The proposed turf fields would fix that and proposed lights that would go with those fields will help with the other issue I was talking about. Fields aren't great and unusable. There's 70 kids that are at home on these weekends playing a PlayStation when they could have been outside having a pickup game and running some drills. I just think the, the condition of the fields here, it's just gotten to a point where it's unacceptable. I know this is an expensive project, very expensive project, it's a lot of money, but it's, it's necessary. And if we delay it any further, we're just going to drive up the long-term cost of doing a project that just plain got to happen. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Shane Gulick? Please come and correct me.
Gulick, it's Gulick. Shane Gulick, 68 Daniel Brown Drive here in Mystic. And it's not as obvious by my accent, but I'm not originally from this area. My wife is. We met in college in central Florida. And long story short, I don't like the cold and she doesn't like the heat. So here we are in Connecticut where it's 34 degrees. I've lived up here since about 2007. When I first moved up here, I worked for a few different local radio stations and had the privilege to be able to do play-by-play for a bunch of high school football games. So I've seen a lot of the facilities in other communities around the area. And, you know, Groton is lacking right now. A lot of the folks that have been up here have been talking about the aesthetics of that and other people from other areas of the state kind of not being too thrilled to come to Groton to play different sports and that kind of thing. And that's a big issue. Another big issue is player and spectator safety. I signed my kid up for T-ball last year and he really enjoyed it, but the field that we played on was just absolutely awful. And if these kids had any more athletic ability than five-year-olds, there's a lot of opportunity for injury there, which is definitely something that needs to be addressed sooner rather than later. This is an issue that was recently brought to my attention, but it seems like it's been kicked down, the can's been kicked down the road quite a few years now. I attended a Board of Education budget meeting a couple of weeks ago and that was one of the things they talked about. There's certain things you can kick down the road and there's certain things you can't. And when it comes to the safety of our children and the safety of other folks coming to this area, I think that has to move it up the list of priorities. Understanding that the folks that are involved in coming up with the various budgets in our area, I don't envy their job. Nobody's, they're not going to make a decision that's going to make everybody happy. And, and I think a lot of people don't understand that and need to understand that. But in this case, just player safety and spectator safety have to be of the utmost importance. So this is an issue that I would say needs to be addressed, as the previous gentleman said, sooner rather than later.
Thank you. Up next, Robert Schwartz.
Robert Schwartz, I'm from 381 Noank Road in Mystic, Connecticut. And I'm kind of here on behalf of my parents. I have two sons that have grown up in the Groton soccer community and absolutely loved it. It's been an amazing positive influence in their life. And, you know, I'm here in support of Frank and his task force and looking at improving infrastructure, just the things I've seen over the years and kind of echo what Hazel was saying with just field space. It's, there is this overcrowding of sports trying to utilize same spaces. So much so that I've seen one son have to go to Grasso Tech for use of their fields only to be pushed off because of other conflicts with sports that are going on there. To aquatic drainage issues, having flooding at that park. And then also with my eldest son, he having to practice in the dark where parents have had to actually pull up their cars and turn headlights on just so they can see because of the hours that they're trying to practice in the fall season especially. So I just want to keep it brief, but that's just from a parent perspective. I just want to say that examining, improving infrastructure, or at least infrastructure with lights would be really beneficial. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Catherine Pratt. Up next, Catherine Pratt.
My name is Catherine Pratt, and I live at seventy-five Front Street in Noank. Mayor Franco, members of the Town Council, good evening. I would like to express serious concerns over the proceedings of the Town Council with respect to the matter of Jeffrey Pritchard's reappointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The attempt to oust this highly experienced and competent candidate by failing to act on his application for reappointment, in disregard of the Town Charter, council policies, and abundant council precedents for what appears to be an unknown personal agenda, is deeply disturbing. It may bear repeating that the Town Council is a municipal legislative body created by the Town Charter, whose powers are derived from the state legislature, and Town Councilors represent the public. If I understand correctly, the Council claims that they cannot give Mr. Pritchard's reappointment application any further consideration at either the committee or council level because Council Rule eight G prevents it. In my opinion, Rule eight G has been misinterpreted and misused. Rule eight G states that once a matter has been rejected or decided, it may not be the subject of another referral for one year without a two-thirds vote. It seems implicit in the wording of the rule that the matter acted upon should be substantive, not procedural. The procedural motion by Councilor Bordelon to suspend the rules to consider Mr. Pritchard's reappointment at the council level should not have been subject to Rule eight G because there was no action taken on the substantive proposition. If her motion to suspend the rules had passed, and then a council majority voted Mr. Pritchard down, that would be a substantive action to which the one-year rule could conceivably be applied. But no discussion, debate, or vote on Mr. Pritchard's reappointment took place. Moreover, under Robert's rules, which the Council technically follows, matters that have already been decided can be revisited, amended, or rescinded at any time in light of new information, and there is no time limit on correcting an error. It may be fair game to replace a member of a border commission who is holding over after their term has expired if they have not applied for reappointment. But if they have applied for reappointment, as Mr. Pritchard has done, they deserve an action on that application and the opportunity for due process. I would also like to support Councilor Bordelon's referral to modify Council Rule seven C. This rule, under which only items reported favorably by a committee majority may appear on the regular council agenda, is antithetical to open democratic government. Under the quicksand of Rule seven C, all items not recommended by a committee majority go directly to the graveyard. And when a committee has only three members, such as the Personnel and Appointments Committee, Rule seven C effectively gives two members veto power over the entire committee agenda. Committees should not function as graveyards where proposals can be killed outright, rather than returned to the full deliberative body for discussion. And committees should always be subservient to the council itself, not the other way around, in a tail-wags-the-dog situation as we have now with the Pritchard affair. In conclusion, I urge you to discuss, deliberate, and support Councilor Bordelon's referral, which would ensure that all items submitted to a committee appear on the regular council agenda and are available for potential consideration by the full body. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Mr. Jeff Pritchard.
I'm Jeff Pritchard. I live at thirty-one West Mystic Avenue, Mystic. And I'm concerned that the Town Council Personnel and Appointments Committee has failed to take action for my reappointment as required by the Town Council procedure. And they're trying to take action to move an alternate Planning and Zoning Commissioner from alternate to regular member in violation of the Town Council Appointment Policy for Boards and Commissions. Just to go over some background, Town Charter, Section eight point one point two states that all appointments shall be in accordance with the policy approved by the council. And this policy is identified on the Town website as Town Council Appointments Policy for Boards and Commissions, which was revised in March twenty nineteen. The Charter also states in Section five point four point three that the council is responsible for the proper function and operation of all offices in ABC, which it fills by appointment, but not their decisions. And I suspect that what they're doing with not reappointing myself is they are trying to attack or destroy the existing Planning and Zoning Commission. Section four point seven of the Appointment Policy states that it's the policy of the Town Council to appoint the most qualified citizens to the ABCs. I don't think they're doing that. Section four point seven also states that the Town Council reserves the right to appoint any applicant regardless of a recommendation from either the political town committees or the Personnel and Appointments Committee, which cannot happen because the town, the committee has not taken action. The Appointment Policy, Section six, states that the Town Council Appointments, this is the states the Town Council Appointments Committee shall act at its next regular meeting on chairperson recommendations for reappointment. The submittal for reappointment of the Planning Commission Chair was not acted upon by the Appointments Committee and therefore should either remain on the committee meeting agenda until action is taken. It should remain its old business. And the lack of this action does not get reported to the Town Council, so they cannot take action on the reappointment, which they should be required to do, as they have the authority, not the Town Council Committee. The result is the committee has improperly assumed authority for reappointment in lieu of the council. And the only statement by the Appointments Committee on why this action was that they thought that the Planning and Zoning Commission should be repopulated with new members that would revise zoning regulations that inhibit change. This comment cannot be justified. The current zoning regulations were recently revised by the Zoning Commission effective October twenty nineteen. Subsequent to this, the zoning authority was transferred to the Planning Commission, which resulted in new personnel looking at zoning issues. So they already have been changed. The current makeup of the Planning and Zoning Commission still has the majority of ex-Planning Commission members over zoning commission members. Since formation of the Planning and Zoning Commission, changes to zoning regulations allow multi-use, has allowed multi-use buildings in the downtown Groton District, supporting construction of Three Waters Street in Mystic, which is the big yellow building. And preliminary discussions have been held with evident, with an attorney to allow construction of apartments in light industrial districts, which indicates that the Planning and Zoning Commission is still active in trying to get regulations revised to support development.
Thank you, Mr. Pritchard. Your time has expired. Thank you.
But I just, one quick item, is that you should not vote on moving the Commissioner up from alternate to regulation because it's not in accordance with your procedure. And I think you're negligent in not taking action to make this committee follow the rules.
Thank you.
And I'll leave a copy of this.
Thank you. Up next is John, I can't quite read the writing, but it's Kafka? No? Okay. Up next, Lawrence Grundy.
Good evening, Council. Lawrence Grundy, sixty-four Kings Highway. I come in support of the work that the Fields Task Force has done. I was originally a part of the task force as vice chair, but due to my obligations at the time as really involved with the music program at Fitch High School and helping to find a new music director, I stepped aside from that. I support the fields as a whole that needs to be done. I support what all the athletic teams are doing. But I particularly want to just touch on the facilities at the high school. The football field and the facilities that are there are abhorrent, to be blunt. They are, they are not ADA compliant, for one. We have, I was a chairman of hosting the marching band competition for ten years while we were up there. And anybody that was handicapped was relegated to sitting in a fold-out chair on the track. There was, there was no means for them to get up into the stands. Secondly, the facilities, the bathroom facilities are terrible. We had people having to go around grills for women to get into the women's bathroom, other times of just using porta-potties. And just the overall facilities really are a time warp, going back to when I was in high school. Nothing has changed. And I am a lifelong resident of Groton and have been here my whole life. My three kids have since all graduated from Fitch in twenty fourteen, twenty seventeen, and most recently in twenty twenty-three. And when this was first kind of being tossed around a decade or so ago, I was kind of hopeful that maybe something at the high school would have been done for my youngest son. And here we are, and nothing at all. And we're just kind of scratching the surface. My oldest son and daughter-in-law had their first child nine months ago. And I hope that fourteen years from now, if they stay in Groton and she gets up to the high school, that we're still not talking about this issue. It, it needs to be addressed, and it can't, it can't go any longer. Thankfully, there has not been any ADA lawsuits or Title Nine lawsuits because there's no facilities for the girls to use down at the high school. And so I just really encourage you to take this seriously because it can't go any longer. Our residents deserve it, our students deserve it. And, and it's time to move our town forward with something that's positive, that doesn't involve car washes, doesn't involve oil change places, that really can impact the whole community as a whole. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Up next, is it Sophie Brahman?
It doesn't help that I have a terrible handwriting. Zofia Baumann. I live at five twenty-eight Shenacostet Road, Department G, in the city, where we have not a single soccer field. And it really sucks because I have, I have a kid who is just so deeply passionate about soccer. And we just have so few options. But I'm here today to really just support the efforts of the task force. Also, I believe in upgrading these fields. Both of my kids, my older one played for a little bit years ago, but decided that wasn't his thing. And now it's just the younger one that's really completely crazy about soccer. And he will literally just use every single opportunity to play the ball, including in my living room. I'd rather go to the soccer field, even if it rains. And it would be just wonderful. So right now, he is in the middle school, and they just had a really successful season. He was thrilled to, for the first time, be part of the soccer team at GMS. They even became champions, which was awesome. And they had their last final game in Old Lime. And that was such a nice stadium. And that's when I realized, holy smokes. Wow, why can't, why can't we have that here? That would be really lovely. Nice bathrooms, really good quality field. And it's such a wonderful opportunity for the community to come together. I've met so many people through being the soccer mom. And I have become healthier myself when I'm making the laps around the fields when he's practicing. So I just, I really couldn't be more passionate about this topic of just really improving our infrastructure and just like supporting our kids and our community in general for just being healthy, being together. We talk over the last few years, since COVID, people are becoming isolated. Kids are so much on their phones or computers. What a better way to bring them together, to have them socialize than in beautiful setting of a nice, you know, sports facility. We really deserve this as a community. There's not much else that, you know, we can enjoy in this area other than being outdoors. And so I really do hope that this, this Town Council is going to take this really seriously. And I'll continue coming to these meetings and speak about this. Thank you so much for your attention. And actually, I just wanted to say thank you for all of your work because I think it's probably pretty thankless otherwise.
Thank you very much. Up next, Clint Kendrick.
Evening, Council. I'm surprised you're able to read my handwriting, so I'm very impressed. My name is Clint Kendrick. I live at three-six-three Ridgewood Drive. I have been a coach for baseball, helped out coaching lacrosse, supported soccer. I got kids right now who are currently in grade school. So we use Sutton Field, Aquanic Plains, Claude Chester, all those areas to support all the different sports we play, and football. They also play football, tackle football over there at Claude Chester. And so the state in which, you know, currently, I guess, where my kids are at, thinking about trying to have the facilities in place to where we can host other teams and also just, you know, for fall sports, be able to do practices, to where we have lights that they could stay longer. I remember someone earlier said about having to turn on car lights so that we have the ability to continue on with practice because, you know, it gets dark around five-thirty, you know, later on in the fall timeframe. So I think that the upgrades of the Athletic Field Task Force are very important to the younger kids. And then I think of the future, whenever my kids get into high school. And this year was the first year my son, my older son, played tackle football. And with that, he was able to go and get into this Fitch Falcons game for free. Unfortunately, they lost, but, you know, it was still fun to go up there. But I was just shocked at the facilities up there and how decrepit they look. And so I really think that it is time to take action now to where we can improve it and actually have something that we're proud of in the high school as well as the economic growth now. If we're hosting lacrosse teams, you know, having different sports tournaments here for the younger kids, that is something that will also bring an opportunity for the community to grow. So I support the Athletic Task Force and what they have put together. And I hope that you will seriously consider doing this sooner rather than later so that we have an opportunity to make this better before my kids get into high school and others. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Up next, May Weiner.
Hi, my name's May Wagner, sixteen Waco Court. I'm here to support the Athletic Field Task Force. I'm not only a Groton resident, I am the president of Groton Mystic Falcons Youth Football League. I am a graduate of Fitch. I have a son who has also graduated from Fitch. I currently have children in Fitch and children in our youth programs. Our athletic fields need to be updated with a sense of urgency, especially our high school. We're not up to code, not compliant on anything at the high school. It's a safety concern on so many levels. We owe it to our youth from elementary to high school to improve their athletic fields, from T-ball, softball, to football, to soccer, track and field, cheerleading, marching band. Everything you can think of is affected by our athletic fields. Our children deserve to have up-to-date facilities to have pride in. They don't like home games because they don't like other schools. They get more excited for away games, to go to other schools, other facilities, to play on better fields, to have better amenities, bathrooms, locker rooms. They would rather be playing out of town than in our own town. We really need to take into consideration updating the high school first and foremost, but all of the fields. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Carrie. I'm having a hard time with handwriting today. I'm sorry. Carrie?
Hello, my name is Carrie Mastro. I live at 139 Dartmouth Drive in Mystic. So I am here in favor of the Athletic Task Force for all of the fields in Groton. I have a son who graduated from Fitch last year. He was in marching band for all four years. And I've been to many high schools because of that. I have a son who was in baseball from the time he was five, tackle football for GMF, and was in the JV program at Fitch. So I've been to many youth football fields, along with more high school fields. And then my daughter is a cheerleader for Groton, and I've been to many more fields, right? Every field that I've been to is better than any one in Groton, between baseball, football, and cheer. It is an embarrassment for people to come. The Groton Paquonic Plains Field is a swamp when it rains, and it's a swamp for days. There's not many places to practice during tackle season when the sun goes down. There's no lights at the practice field at Claude Chester. There's no lights at the game field. And there's no practice field for the JV because they practice at the high school. They practice the same time as the varsity, and the varsity gets the field, the football field, and JV gets a little side grass area. It's just not fair to everybody. Yeah, that's pretty much it. I do know that there are baseball fields behind Sutton Park that are not being used. There's like five, I think, baseball fields there, only two of them are active. Whatever's behind that, three fields, is just grass, where it could be used. It could be, you know, utilized for something, soccer, bit more baseball practice for football, youth, anything. When I drive by during soccer season, I don't have a child in soccer, but I'm there for y'all. When soccer is playing, when there's soccer games at the Groton Paquonic Plains, when I'm like, when I'm driving by or if I'm there at the park with my kids, I don't know what's going on. There are so many different soccer games going on at the same time. Looks like it's all just one. It's not. It doesn't look good. So that's all I got to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Up next. It might be Larry Johnson? Lacey, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm having a hard time with handwriting tonight.
My name is Lacey Johnson, 87 Main Street, Noank. So I am an indoor track and field and outdoor track and field coach and have been for several years. My parents actually moved here for the schools when I was born. And I find that very hard at this time when I'm trying to motivate my student athletes to help them feel like our town cares about them at all. Because the same facilities that some other people here, or my teammates at Fitch High School, they're exactly the same as 29 years ago. So the exact same shot put circle that I set the school record that still stands is where some of my athletes who are here have to throw. And honestly, the other coaches and I have tried to paint it, to try and make it something better so that maybe they won't feel as depressed. But honestly, it's disgusting. I'm really upset because it is just so depressing. Now, technically speaking, outdoor track, I am a boys' coach. I coach all. And I will always stand with all of our Falcons and all of our sports. But my office is in the field house. So I have to go through the boys' locker room because this entire stadium was built before Title IX was even implemented. So there's literally nothing, nothing in the entire facility that is for girls, women. And as a woman coaching a guy's sport, I have to make sure that everyone is out of the building so I can go into our office. And when I go into that locker room, the ceilings have fallen down. They are now cut off, right? It smells, I don't even know how to describe it. Death. Death is definitely one of the smells. They were going to try and put an elevator in, but they can't do that because of what's in the building that can't be moved, I guess, relating to asbestos. At the time, this was the premier facility in the entire state of Connecticut. Two of my fellow coaches were athletes at Fitch, were all proud alum. And literally, all of the cities throughout Connecticut would come to track meets at Fitch to get the best times. It's so depressing when we have home track meets because there is nothing that we need. There is no place for the girls to get changed. There's no locker rooms for the opposite team to go into. And as much as I do understand that there are so many pressing issues in our government, there's so much going on. I truly believe in Groton. I really, I love this town. I love the people in it. And truly, you know, it's my mission to serve these kids and to give back to my community. I want to continue to do that. I am, in fact, running camps, track and field camps this summer for Groton Parks and Recreation. I want to get us with youth track and field to get more and more kids active. We just, we haven't done this in over 50 years. It's time. We have to do it. There's no more places to kick anything down the road. And for that matter, we've been talking about trying to do, because we have such great unified sports, and a lot of our athletes are really involved with that, and we have great collaborations with other schools. We'd like to do Special Olympics involving the high school kids. We can't have anyone in wheelchairs down there. There's no place for them to go to the bathroom. There's no place that they can use accessibly. So I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I also apologize by calling in the wrong name. Up next, Alyssa Wright.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Alyssa Wright, and I live at 59 Main Street in Noank. I wish to state my concern that, to date, no substantive action has been taken on the merits of Jeffrey Pritchard's timely application for reappointment as a full member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I, along with many other members of the public, have expressed grave concerns about the lack of transparency and accountability in the council's highly irregular treatment of Mr. Pritchard's application, especially in light of the depth and breadth of his knowledge and expertise in planning and zoning and his interest in continuing to serve on the commission. I will be submitting, I am submitting a more extensive statement and will only highlight the main points here. As you know, under the Town Charter, appointed members of agencies, boards, and commissions hold office for a prescribed term and until their successor is appointed and qualified. I do believe that the council's perception that a vacancy occurred on the Planning and Zoning Commission upon the expiration of Mr. Pritchard's term on December 31st, 2024, is erroneous. Under Connecticut case law, when the term of office is not only for a definite term, but until a successor is appointed and qualified, the incumbent continues to occupy the office de jure. And there is no vacancy in the office while the incumbent, including while the incumbent official's reappointment is pending but not yet acted upon by the appointing authority. The expiration of Mr. Pritchard's designated term does not, in and of itself, create a vacancy. In addition, specifically with regard to the appointment process set forth in the council's Appointment Policy for Boards and Commissions, the Personnel and Appointments Committee, quote, "shall act on all recommendations for reappointment of members and alternates submitted by the Chair of the Board or Commission under the processes described in Section 6." A review of the Personnel Committee's November 19th, 2024, meeting reveals that contrary to that Appointment Policy Directive to act on reappointment submissions, no action was taken either to recommend that the council reappoint Mr. Pritchard or not. Indeed, there was no discussion at all. To date, the committee has neglected to take any action on the merits of his pending reappointment, despite a clear legal obligation to do so under both the Town Council's Appointment Policy Directive and the Town Charter's requirement that, quote, "all appointments shall be in accordance with the policy approved by the council." That's at Charter, Section 8.1.2. Until the Personnel and Appointments Committee and/or the full council takes substantive action on Mr. Pritchard's reappointment, the outcome of their decision is in limbo. It's uncertain. Certainly, the stated policies of the council, quote, "to appoint the most qualified citizens to agencies, boards, and commissions" and to, quote, "attract and retain qualified and interested citizens to serve on them, militate powerfully in support of Mr. Pritchard's reappointment." And just briefly, the recent applications of two alternates on the Planning and Zoning Commission to fill what is erroneously perceived as a current vacancy on the commission were improperly submitted on the form and under the procedures for initial appointments, rather than under the quite different procedures for moving alternates up to full members and therefore should not be acted upon, considered or acted upon. I believe these points necessitate a decision by the Personnel and Appointments Committee and the full council on the merits of Mr. Pritchard's pending reappointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission, to be arrived at in open meetings with an opportunity for all members to participate in the discussion and debate on an equal basis in a transparent, fair, and accountable process. I believe the town council should take no action on the applications of either Mr. Fiftal or Ms. Gautier to fill what is erroneously perceived to be a vacancy as not being compliant with the council's Appointment Policy for Boards and Commissions concerning the elevation of alternate members to red members.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Your time has expired.
And it is inappropriate and premature in light of the matter of Mr. Pritchard's pending reappointment, which has yet to be acted on. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Alex Lee.
Good evening, Alex Lee, 231 Belair Drive. As I walked in this morning, or this evening, I walked in with the mayor, and she said, wow, a lot of people here tonight. You're right. This is how important this topic is to us. So I'm not going to go on with, you know, I'm here to support the task force. I'm not going to go on with the in compliance that we have, the embarrassment of these fields, just kind of the message that we're sending to not only everybody that comes and visited, but our youth as well, that this is what we kind of are investing in. We're not investing anything. The fact that some of you folks or people in the crowd are going to play on the same field at high school, or forget sports, to graduate on the same turf or field or stands that some of you did, that my eight-year-old son potentially will do the same, is unacceptable. I can sit up here and we can, you know, watching the meeting last week, I understand the budget part, you have probably the worst job of everybody. I understand that part of it, and we, you know, listening on the other night, it was pretty obvious at the end of it, the turf, the grass, what are we going to do, what kind of amenities, all these things. Those are all little things along the way, right? They're just pieces of the project. But what has happened, and for the gentleman, I don't know his name, but the glasses that presented the other night, he has been working on this project for almost 15 years. 15 years. Will any of you guys serve on this council for more than 15 years? Will you dedicate one section of your life to the same thing for 15 years? And now I hope that you see through tonight, the people that have come out, there's a wide range of age here. Me, maybe, being on the younger side of things, this is not going to stop. This is not a topic that we want as parents or as folks who live in this community to say, look at us, we're better than everybody. This is a topic that has to happen. This isn't about wanting it. We need this. This is something for our kids, regardless of the sports piece of it. I look at the high school as one of the things that, it's multifaceted. We had people from the marching band up here. You have baseball folks. You have all these people. I just simply look at it as the fact that you may have take, you may take the same graduation picture on the 50-yard line that my eight-year-old will take is unacceptable. Now, I work in New London, and some of you may know me from there. I've watched them pull a turf, put a turf down, pull it up, and put down a new one before we have even talked about actually getting this thing to a vote. So tonight, I'm not going to sit here and go through details. From what I saw the other day, everybody has valid concerns. There's things, budget, turf, grass, all those things are good considerations and things that we need to talk about. But the other piece that I want to bring is that someone said it earlier on. You folks were voted into these positions by people that I've seen you guys door to door. I've worked with some people up here. I've seen people doing the work. When we vote for you, we vote for you to have our voice in mind. What I've seen over the last three years, just watching this happen, and my father-in-law being someone who has really dedicated a ton of his life, when he doesn't really have to. He already had his kids go through. It's now our turn to do it, but he has dedicated the time to do that, to have seen how the can just keeps going down the road. And my big takeaway from the meeting the other night was that there is support on this council. I could feel that in the comments and the questions that we were asking and trying to figure out some solutions. Again, with budget season going into a vote, if we do not push this forward, it is going to just keep getting kicked down the road. And now, at the end of this election season, we will have missed it. And then we'll have to wait for another budget season where we can figure it out. So now we're talking three, four years down the road. Now we're talking about seven, eight, nine years before the project is even completed. So my reason for coming tonight is not to push one sport or another or to push one field priority or another. It is that you guys simply push this forward so we can make a vote on it. Maybe it fails. I don't know. You don't know that answer. There's going to be people that are going to be mad about turf. They're going to be mad about grass. They're going to be mad about the fields being built. They're going to be mad about the fields not being built. You're in a lose scenario here on all sides. But please, at this point, there is enough information, there is enough statistics, there are different ways that we can pivot if there are things that people don't agree on. But for the sake of everyone and all these kids in this community, please, just put this to a vote and let the people decide. It doesn't have to be perfect, and it's not going to be perfect. And there will be people mad on all sides. But at this point, please, please, because that's the way I left that meeting, was like, man, we're just going to keep pushing this and pushing this and pushing this, and then it's just not going to happen. It's not going to happen. I will tell you that we, everybody you see here today, and this isn't even all of them. This was a 24-hour notice that we got this much of a response. We will not stop until these fields are built.
Thank you. All right, up next is Catherine Archibald. You're all set. Thank you. Up next, Chris Kahn. Up next, Chris Kahn.
Mayor Franco, members of the town council, my name is Chris Kuhn, I live at 104 Irving Street in Groton, Connecticut, and I want to comment on the matter of Mr. Pritchard and an alternate coming up to regular position. I stand in support of Jeffrey Pritchard's reappointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission. It appears that the town council is prepared tonight to fill its proclaimed vacancy of that position. I'm here to register my concern regarding the recent decision of the Personnel and Appointments Committee to advance one of two alternate members on the Planning and Zoning Commission who applied for the one vacancy for a regular position. I'm concerned about the process by which the decision was made, and I want to request that the mayor and/or town manager seek a review by the town attorney, as I believe the process did not comply with town policy as put forward in Section 6.5. Due to this noncompliance, I assert, the council should defer any vote to advance an alternate to regular membership on planning and zoning until after the situation has received review. I attended by Zoom the January 21st Personnel and Appointments Committee meeting. The committee had received applications for advancement to regular status from two P&amp;Z alternates, Lauren Gautier and Kevin Fiftal. The committee voted to recommend Ms. Gautier for a confirmatory vote by the town council. I want to be very clear at the outset of my comments that my concern with the committee's decision and process in no way is intended to reflect poorly on Ms. Gautier. Quite the contrary, I want to convey respect for her talents and positive contributions to P&amp;Z now and in the future. My serious misgivings are rooted in the content of the discussion among committee members and the fact that it focused almost entirely on Ms. Gautier with absolutely no meaningful consideration, in fact, almost no mention of Mr. Fiftal. As a result, it appeared that the choice of Ms. Gautier was a predetermined outcome. Recording of the meeting may be accessed by the town website. By my account, discussion was initiated by Mr. Gajewski, who began by announcing that he was in favor of Ms. Gautier. He stated he had watched recent P&amp;Z meetings and was very impressed by her participation, including ideas about factual ways P&amp;Z could get its message out. Ms. Rusk noted that she and Ms. Gautier had served together on the RTM, and she was supportive of the application. Mr. Jones remarked he had watched the most recent P&amp;Z meeting and Ms. Gautier handled herself well. On her application, Ms. Gautier had listed work and various experiences in local government that had given her contract experience, and Mr. Jones cited those. Regarding Mr. Fittal, discussion was nonspecific and brief, only including a few comments such as, "I don't know him as well," quote unquote, and, quote, "I have nothing against Mr. Fittal, I don't know him personally," unquote. With that, the votes were cast unanimously for Ms. Gautier. It is cause for consternation, the committee did not even mention one of Mr. Fittal's most critical qualifications for advancement. He has been a P&amp;Z alternate for more than four years and has substantially more experience with P&amp;Z when compared to Ms. Gautier's tenure of less than a year. Like Ms. Gautier, Mr. Fittal had provided information about his background, but there was no discussion of this. No mention of his work experience as a business executive with Siemens, NEC, Intel, and Microsoft, nor his authorship of framework cybersecurity documents and publication, nor his role as principal investigator for the National Cybersecurity Center for Excellence. Finally, there was no mention of Mr. Fittal's broad and deep knowledge of data-centered technology, nor his critically important contributions as a member of P&amp;Z as it grappled with the hyper-data center controversy and the promulgation of data center regulations for the town. The town policy for boards and commissions sets forth a policy for advancement of an alternate to a permanent position in Section 6.5, which reads in part, "When a vacancy occurs for a regular member of an ABC for any reason, the town clerk shall notify the Chair of the ABC. If there are alternate members serving on the ABC, the Chair shall discuss with the most senior slash experienced alternate as to their interest in moving up to a regular position. If the member is interested and the Chair recommends their moving up, the Chair should complete a reappointment questionnaire." With respect to these policies, Mr. Pritchard, as Chair of P&amp;Z, should have been contacted included in the moving up process outlined above. To the best of my knowledge, he was not. Further, Mr. Fittal himself expressed interest in becoming a regular member due to his seniority and experience.
Thank you, Ms. Kuhn. Your time has expired.
Thank you.
I ask that there be no action on this matter pending legal review. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, we have a room full of people, so I'm just going to explain to you what's happening next in our agenda. We're going to go through our consent calendar, approve some minutes.
Do we have a person?
Oh, we do. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Just a point of clarification.
We have a person that's going to speak next.
I just want to make sure we offer anybody in the audience.
Understood.
Thank you.
Mike DeFranco.
We're good?
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, we're doing online first, I'm so sorry. Just one moment, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. DeFranco.
You guys can hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks for hearing me called in earlier. So, Mike DeFranco, 160 Heather Glen Lane, Mystic, also the Parks and Rec Commissioner, and I've heard a lot on the fields over the last two years, you know, being in that position. Kind of wanted to start with thanking the task force, and as, you know, someone else said, Frank has put a lot of work into it, you know, the task force is a volunteer, so great work on that, and appreciate you guys doing it. Lot of good comps too on surfaces, and, you know, really thought into design of fields and pros and cons in both ways, so the task force did a lot. Lot of good deep dives into why we'd want them, what type of fields, a lot of homework was done, so appreciate that, you don't always see that, sometimes you just get a project without a lot of background, so I think there was a lot of thought put in there, so appreciate that. Kind of wanted to express, hey, I am in support of the fields, but I want to go into a little deeper detail. A lot of people expressed the positive stuff for the fields, but if you really look at the 60-plus-page report, on the second to last page, it was kind of three options for fields that were published, three different areas, and I think it's important maybe to talk a little bit about that of priority too. And, you know, each one has a different cost figure, you know, estimate, ROM to it. Someone mentioned previously speaking, hey, there's a time to go do these, and I agree, right? I think time is for some action in some of this, and, you know, I'd ask the council to consider, right, there's not unlimited funds, and as a taxpayer, right, I don't want to pay more taxes, but I realize that there's a need in some cases to pay more taxes, as, you know, the fields have a good instance of doing that. And I'd ask you to think about priority too, as someone said, it takes a while to go design these, final design, build, et cetera. So, ask you as you're coming into the budget season, really think about priority, and then maybe not consider approving the whole $56 million thing at first, but think about what could the first step be, as someone said, you know, maybe, and for example, maybe Claude Chester is the first one because it adds more fields than the high school goes because you would want to, as you did construction in the high school, you'd want to be able to bring some of those practices and those people using them to the Claude Chester fields, which are now new. And then maybe something in the future, maybe Sutton holds off for a while because you do have parks there, I understand they're not the same regulation size, but think of it in terms of what can you do and when can you do it. So, phasing it in can be a good thing at those three, maybe, site levels, so I'd ask the council to consider that too, as decisions are being made, what can we do and when can we do it? You know, maybe, maybe doing, approving one a year or something like that is the best way, but I am in support, but I do ask that you consider phasing, and again, I think the top two from my perspective here and everything is Claude Chester and Fitch, those really add fields and add capability, where Sutton does improve stuff, but the two biggest banks for the buck of those two. So, appreciate the time and great work, task force, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Come on up, please. Sorry about the confusion earlier.
Oh, that's all right, I couldn't hear you in the back, I just decided it was my turn. Faith Richardson, I live at 21 Boulder Court in Mystic. I wasn't super prepared to talk tonight, but I am here like pretty much everyone else in the room to support the Athletic Fields Task Force. I'm not sure where the misunderstanding that these fields aren't important to us, how that came about, there's a task force for it? I mean, come on, obviously it's important. I am a parent of two high schoolers that play sports at Fitch. I coached a grand soccer club for a billion years, maybe give or take a billion. I am a strong supporter just in general of Parks and Recreation, they're very important, they're great stewards of our fields and leaders, and we should really listen to the things that they are putting forward as well. There's a master plan, we paid a lot of money for that, we should take into account that they asked for more fields than that, maybe we should take that into consideration. Currently, my kids are playing soc, well, not currently, currently, my kids are playing soccer at the high school, and at the turf field during soccer season, the boys, the girls, high school, boys and girls middle school, and field hockey, all play on that field. That's ridiculous. It is unsafe, I actually had to text or email the AD one day to say, there are four soccer fields and two field hockey goals, there's four goals and two field hockey goals all on this field all at once. If my kid runs into it and gets a concussion or hurts themselves, that's a liability, you can't do that. And they rectified it, but it should be obvious, there's clearly a lack of space. They practice at all hours of the night because there's just so many people trying to play on that field all at once. And not the least important, probably the most important as far as you all are concerned, if we get nice fields, we can host tournaments. My kids play everywhere, I am out of town, out of state regularly for tournaments for them. I spend a lot of money when I go stay in the hotel and eat out for every meal and buy the clothes that they forgot to pack. We could be doing that here, but we're choosing not to. So I support the Athletic Fields Task Force and what they have put forward. Also graduated on that field, and as did my dad and his dad, well, not his dad, different field, but come on, let's update these things. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak? Why not?
Dawn Barasso, 75, last circle.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your name.
Dawn Barasso.
Thank you.
I don't know if you guys have got the proposal from the Park and Rec relative to the golf fees for 2025. I'm concerned about the fact, I've got four concerns. First concern is the resident rate between members for the season passes between resident and non-residents. For 2024, it was 11%. The new proposal is 5%. I don't understand why the residents are taking a hit on that. Number two is they're now defining the military discount as active military instead of retired and active, which it was in '24, and has been for the past quite a few years. So I don't understand that particular, why we're not recognizing our retired military for the discount. The third comment is they're proposing a loyalty card, and for the loyalty card, I would pay for the lowest level of loyalty card, I would pay $49, and I would get a 10% discount every time I played golf on my golf fees. However, what they're also saying is for that same $49, I would have access to the, sign up to the T-sheets seven days in advance, which is what the season pass members right now get, and as opposed to the general public, which has a six-day period to sign up for the sheet. As a season pass member, I'm paying thousands of dollars to get that privilege, and for $49, I can get the same privilege. I don't know that we should endorse having the loyalty cards also having that discount or early access to the T-sheets. So, 49 versus 2,000, doesn't seem like that's a fair trade-off. And the final comment is the budget that was proposed in early January by the superintendent was a modest 3% increase in all the fees across the board for all the different categories. What the new proposal is, if they reduced all those categories down to a limited number of categories, the increase for myself as a, I'm a 40-year member of the golf course at a unlimited rate, it would be an 18% increase to me versus the, a family that is participating would only have to pay 10% increase for the unlimited rate. So I don't, I don't know how you justify 18 versus 10 and why it's not a uniform across the board. Don't have all the numbers, we have not seen the breakdown relative to who's in what category. One of the big hitters is military, they've eliminated the category for military, so they would now become as, going in as a, either a resident or non-resident, so they're seeing well in excess of a 25% increase into their fees. So again, just consideration for you when you get that, again, probably the biggest concern is why as a resident am I seeing a decrease from what I used to get it as 11% and now it's at 5%? So, I thank you for your time, and I don't know if you've got the proposal yet, but something to consider anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak?
Hi, my name is Meg Spillenhow, I really wasn't prepared to speak tonight, but at 135 Prospect Hill Road in Noank, my daughter graduated from Marine Science High School, but got to play for the Fitch teams at the high school, she played field hockey and lacrosse for all four years, and I got to witness, you know, her freshman year, a lot of the JV girls, all the way up until her, actually, they just got like this year, so all the JV, in the fall, all the field hockey teams, varsity plays first because they have enough daylight, and then the JV would get maybe 20 minutes of playing time. And I'm sure a lot of you guys understand the importance of sports for a lot of these kids after school. You get to learn a lot of things that you don't learn in a classroom. You learn how to be a team, you learn how to work hard, you learn how to support each other, and you don't learn all that stuff in a classroom. And I think it's a really, really important part of being a great community member or part of a business, or wherever you're going in life, having those attributes is really, really important. I also think another major issue with that Groton Middle School turf field, that there's no bathrooms. We have high school girls who are menstruating and are riding a bus for an hour and a half, and they don't have the ability to wash their hands. That's a big deal. They're going and using one porta potty, a whole team of 30 kids are hydrating because they're going to be running their butts off, and there's one porta potty, and that's it. That's it. It's not acceptable for these kids, it really isn't. I really hope you guys put this to a vote and we can move forward with this. So, thank you.
Ian Thomas, 24, Justin Drive. For full disclosure, I am also a member of the Board of Education and spouse to Councilor I'm here to speak in support of the Athletic Fields Task Force and the presentation that we saw last week. I highly encourage this council to consider at least bringing it forward to a referendum. You know, do the work, come up with a way to parcel out the pieces, you know, there's three major phases to it that, you know, could be all combined as one, or you could focus on the high schools since that's the most critical area of need, and then move on from there. But either way, I think the community deserves a right to decide. As you can see, there's plenty of people willing to come out on very short notice, and there's more where they came from, to my understanding. And as a member of the Board of Ed, I definitely, as individual member, I would definitely encourage the support and would work on my end to advocate the board, support the maintenance and upkeep of the fields once they are restored and updated. I'm also here to speak, again, to reiterate my concerns regarding the policies and procedures of this of this body, you know, in particular in regards to personnel and appointments. Over the past couple of months, we've seen very odd irregularities, as has been noted by Ms. Pratt, Ms. Wright, and Ms. Kuhn. And so I would just reiterate what they said and articulated in their communications. Section 6.5 clearly states that essentially the chairperson of any commission is expected to weigh in on any alternate that's moving up to take a regular spot, and that, to my knowledge, has not occurred. Also, to reiterate what Ms. Wright was talking about, the vacancy is erroneous. It's a manufactured vacancy, and because no action was taken, as has been noted by a couple of councilors already, that, you know, no discussion equals no action, you know, and a second is a matter of formality. It's not actually even needed, according to Robert's rules, when it comes to nominations. So there's no discussion, no deliberation on Mr. Pritchard. He's left in limbo, so that is not a vacancy, just because his term technically expired, but did not really expire, if you look at the letter of the law. So essentially, that's, you know, in violation of Town Charter as well. So what your authority derives from, you're violating. So I urge you to take a second read on that and consult with an attorney and ask them for a written opinion. In fact, I would encourage all councilors to not just take vagaries of assertions, but to ask for things in writing with citations, as far as like any legal interpretation. It was also stated last week that councilors cannot have electronics at their desks. That was a rule. The rule that was referred to was Rule 8D, Section D., Point 7, that talks about communication devices being used to communicate. During any council or committee session, no councilor shall send to receive from any person in communication pertaining to any agenda item under discussion by way of electronic communication, including instant messaging, any platform. That has to do with communication, active sending and receiving. That has nothing to do with the mere presence of an electronic device that someone may use to assist their memory or their recall, or to research and verify other points that are being made by other personnel or colleagues on the council. So, you know, I would, again, you know, be careful with your interpretations, stick to the letters of what are written, what is written, and, you know, be gracious. Have a little grace. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else like to speak? Okay, so I'll just explain, because there are some people here that may not have come to these meetings before. Up next, we're going to basically approve our minutes, and then we'll go into communications, where councilors can then make comments in general, and if they would like to touch on any of the topics that you did speak about, they are free to do so. So, up next is calendar and communications. Councilor Gieske, would you like to take those?
Yes, I would. I want to approve the consent calendar, which is Item 2025-0904, January 7, 2025, and Item 2025-4-1, Special Press on Contradictions, February 2025, so moves.
Second, Jones.
Move by Gieske, second by Jones. All right, not seeing any hands, we'll take a vote on the consent calendar. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions?
All abstained.
Okay, so we have two, that passes six, to zero to one. Up next, communication reports. We have the town councilors. We will start with you, Councilor Merritt. Do you have anything you'd like to share tonight?
No, not at this time.
All right, Councilor Bordelon.
Thank you. I just want to thank everyone who took the time to come out on such a short notice. I'm a firm believer in believing in athletic fields for our youth. You know, as I stated, I was also a Fitch High School graduate. A few of my people here, Lacy, that I've served with, ran with as a team on track. These fields are deplorable, and I stand with you guys. I've served on the Athletic Task Force, and I believe action needs to be now, not later, now. We can grapple over what type of field we want later, let's just support a field. Let's get there. As a person who struggled with breast cancer, and I'm very open about that, there were times when I was trying to enjoy my last years with my son at the sports field and only had a porta potty available at a track meet. A person who's on chemo should not be going into a porta potty, you know, without any hand sanitation. Hearing about the women up at the middle school makes me disgusted and saddened that, and I've seen those buses and I've heard from families, that 30 girls are trying to get into one porta potty. We should do better. We need to invest in our infrastructure. So I stand with you, and I will continue to speak up and out about this. I'm in full support about moving this to a vote to people, but I need more colleagues up here to kind of jump on board. With that, I also want to bring up the fact, 6.5, when talking about the town council's appointment policy and boards and commissions, I don't believe 6.5 was followed here, and that's my question, I will ask when we have our chance to talk about that. When a vacancy occurs on an A.B.C., the reason a town clerk notifies the chairperson of the A.B.C.? From my understanding, that person was not notified, and Mr. Fiftell being moved up after being four years didn't even get a fair shot, so I have concerns about that. Lastly, I'll also speak, and I'll speak at the next council meeting about this, I was asked at the last meeting to put my laptop away, saying that it was a new rule and that that was something I had to do. I don't know what rule they're reading, as it states here, during any council or committee session, councilor should, shall send or receive from a person or communication pertaining to an agenda item or under discussion by any way of electronic communication, including instant messages via platform. I asked again for that grace that night. They told me to close my laptop, and I couldn't use it. I'm in receipt of a letter from my oncologist, which is sad that I have to do this as a volunteer to serve, and it states here that "To whom it may concern, I'm writing on behalf of the patient, Portia Bordelon. She's currently under my care for medical needs." This is from my oncologist. "Due to her ongoing health conditions, which I'm very open about, and the side effects that are associated with her treatment, it is medically necessary for her to have access to a laptop to perform computer-based work, including note-taking and agenda review. Providing accommodations will help support her ability to manage her workload effectively while minimizing physical strain and ensuring that she can maintain her health and well-being. I kindly request that your consideration in facilitating this comment should be supported. If you have any questions, sign. Smilo, Dr. Legary." So after that, I revisited this interpretation, and it states-
Thank you, Councilor Bordelon, your time has expired.
It did not state that I could not be on my computer. So again, I feel like I'm being targeted up there. If we are environmentalists, why do we want all this paper?
You're out of order now. 20 minutes over time.
Anyway.
Thank you.
Not happy.
20 seconds, I'm sorry. 20 seconds over time. Councilor Pacino.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Groton Town Athletic Fields, this is the very first time this has come before me. This is my first time on the town council. I am all for it. If it needs to go somewhere, and I can push it, I'm going to push it. So that's that. I'm good.
Thank you. Councilor Russ.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Like Councilor Pacino, this is my first time on town council. I'm going to say I'm all for this, but we need to look at creative funding. So I'm going to urge all of you here, because you all know what you need, to also think of ways that we can be creative on how to fund this. We are looking at unprecedented times. We have a, and I'm not going to get overly political, but we have a president right now who is looking to get rid of the education department. We don't know what that looks like for our students in our schools. We don't know if we're going to have federal funding. I don't know what our budget is going to look like. I would love to say yes to all of this. I have it right in front of me. I was looking at it while you guys were talking. My main fear on this is overtaxing our citizens. For those of you who don't know, I work for an agency that works on food insecurity in our, in our community. I've worked with a number of you here on that. I know people who can't feed their children. So I'm not saying that this is not important. I really do believe that this is important. We just need to be creative. We can't overtax our residents. So how do we do that? I'm all about putting this to referendum, 100%, 100%, but how that looks, we have to figure that out. And we would love to consider your help along the way. We would love to look at maybe other ways in funding this. So keep talking to us. Please know that we up here aren't against this. We just want to make sure that everybody in Groton, okay, I'm going to speak for me. I'm sorry, I don't mean to speak for anybody else. I am not against this, but we need to be creative. So that's where I'm at on that. In my last minute, I will say, I want to say thank you to Economic Development in Groton, the Office of Planning and Development Services. They did a fantastic job for the Groton Community Conversation on the 29th. If you have not had the opportunity, if you did not have the opportunity to be there, please watch it online. They did a fantastic job. I believe it was filmed. Thank you to Councilor Parker, who is not here tonight. She did a wonderful job, again, hosting the City of Groton Black History Month event on the first of the month. The Greater Mystic and Mystic-Nohank Library Black History Month Celebration is this Saturday. It starts at 9:00 a.m. at the Anchor Downtown in Mystic. I highly recommend everybody attend. It was a wonderful event last year. It will go up to Union Baptist Church. And that is my report for tonight.
Thank you. Councilor Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I echo Councilor Russ's comment on the task force and the fields, so I agree with pretty much everything she said. It was also, I echo the planning event that was last week, was a tremendous event and some great discussions going on in the breakout groups that happened. So kudos to our Planning and Development Department, who did a great job putting that on. I also just wanted to echo, I know I had thanked Lieutenant Bysiewicz last week on the Veterans Event that she put on honoring our Vietnam and Korean War veterans. I just had during the last week, I had a number of veterans come up to me, one in a restaurant and one someplace else, and just thanked me over and over for the effort that we did and the effort that Susan Bysiewicz, Lieutenant Governor Bysiewicz, did on hosting that event. Some of these veterans mentioned that this is the first time that they have ever been thanked since the Vietnam War, and that we honored them. It was a great honor, along with the mayor and Representative Baumgartner, to be able to be at that event. So I just wanted to thank the veterans that did come up and talk to me, and any veteran that wants to come and talk to me. I'm out and about all the time and always willing to talk, but it was a real honor to have them come up, and it just echoed the importance of trying to get a Veteran Services officer in the town, as we have none at the moment, and we're not servicing our veterans. And we are the largest, have the largest veterans residence in all of Connecticut is in this area. So a thank to her for what she did and being able to be there, and a thank you to the veterans who came up and have spoken to me. So just thank you for that.
Thank you. Councilor Gieske.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll do the quick things. I attended the Planning and Development Summit, conversation with Councilor Russ and Councilor Jones, and then I also attended with Councilor Russ the Black History Month Celebration in the City of Groton, where our colleague, Councilor Parker, emceed a wonderful event this weekend. This morning, I had our, I'm the liaison to Children's First Groton. I had a meeting with them. Their third annual resource fair will be on March 29th from 10:00 to 12:00 at Thames River Magnet School, and then they are also sponsoring a St. Patrick's Day Craft Fair to be held on March 12th at the Mystic-Nohank Library. So they are busy, busy with events. And then on to the Athletic Fields Task Force. Thank you all for coming. I, too, for myself, I am supportive of the project, but as some of my colleagues stated, there are some financial to get it across the finish line, but as a counselor, I look forward to helping it get across the finish line, because I appreciate all the work that the task force and many community members did the time that they gave to the project, and I'd like to see it through. And it was good to see so many familiar faces, especially Coach Johnson, my college, high school track coach. That is, oh, I had a question. I was looking, as we were, the Athletic Fields Task Force, I had a question for the town manager that I'm going to use my time on. Are there lights in the projects other than the Fitch High School lights that are currently there? Because I didn't see that in there, but-
I guess I have that in my head.
Okay, because it was, it was mentioned, yes, it's, okay, I got a thumbs up from Mr. Naroski, who was on the task force. Okay, it just wasn't in our package, I was just kind of curious. That is it for me, Madam Mayor. I know you'll be back.
Thank you very much. I attended the legislative luncheon this, when was it, yesterday? With Electric Boat. They have announced that they're going to have over 3,000 jobs here in 2025, and two important questions were asked of the CEO from Electric Boat. Number one was about childcare. Their needs for childcare are second shift. They are in desperate need of second shift type of childcare. Then the other one was housing. Electric Boat's response was, "We're going to focus on building submarines." And then they went on to say, "Put pressure on your local officials to build more housing in the communities," because, as we all know, many residents need housing. They are bringing in more workers, and what they're saying is they're going to focus on the submarines, and they want us to focus on trying to get housing in our neighborhoods. What was really nice, though, also, was to hear when I spoke to the CEO one-on-one, was that they want to give more back to their community. They want to donate more and be part of youth organizations, so just to let you all know. They want to do scoreboards, sponsor teams, and things of that nature, and I was very delighted to hear that. I will also say, last year, there was a liaison meeting with the government liaison and Councilor Russ, Parker, and myself, where we had discussions with them when they said to us, "Who can we contact? Who can we work with?" We gave information on people and organizations within our community that we thought would be good partners with them, as well as tell them to please sign on to letters to support childcare in our area, anytime something comes up at the state. And I am seeing good support for that from actually some of our legislators on the state as well. I just wanted to note that any rules that this council goes by are voted on by this council. There is no new pop-up rules that people didn't know about. They are voted on by this council. Watching the federal government and what's going on right now, I want to prepare our community. We don't know what's going on, but I'm hoping that by the March 14th date, that we will see that our federal government and what they might be coming out with, with a new budget, or with new funding for the government, and how that might trickle down to states and local. Because honestly, if we get cut by the federal government, it will be pretty devastating to our schools and to our town. And how we will make up that money, I just, there is a lot going on right now, and it's pretty, it's pretty worrisome, and we're all keeping our eyes wide open. And when it comes to Athletic Fields Task Force, in my last 20 seconds, I'm going to tell you, I have been an advocate, always have been, always will be. I'm sad that this, some of these things haven't been fixed before. This council took on athletic fields. Our town council took it on. This was, and we are the ones pushing forward to try and get all the information and go forward with it. So, thank you. Up next is the clerk of the council. Do you have anything to share?
Yes, we're having a special election for State Representative of the 40th Assembly of District, which that affects District 3, 4, and 5. Election day will be February 25th. We will have four early voting days, February 20th to the 23rd.
Okay, moving on to the clerk of the representative town meeting. Do you have anything else?
Yeah, next meeting for them will be February 12 at 7:00 p.m. at Bri 55+. Currently, there are four vacancies. District 3 has one Republican seat. District 4 has two minority representations, and District 6 has one Democratic seat that we believe will be filled next week.
Thank you. Up next is the, I'm sorry, do you have a question, Councilor?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask, is there any, like, information that can be shared that's been put up on social media about the early election and the special election that's going on?
Sure, we can.
Yeah, because if we could put that up, it would be great so that people can access that. It should be maybe up on our town page, since it's kind of an outlier.
It is on the town page.
Okay.
It is. It's just not on social media, as I believe it's not, but it is on the town page, under announcements, and also under the town clerk.
Perfect. If we can move it on to the Facebook page, it'd be great, so people can share it from there and have access- share it from there and have access to that, because some people don't go to government pages. They just don't think to go there. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Town Manager Burr?
Good evening. Not much to report tonight. One, the Human Services Director vacancy. We've went through the first round of interviews, and then now it's the one-on-one with me on Thursday, where I'm interviewing three people, so I anticipate having someone pretty quick there. And then to, just to those watching, the Board of Ed will be joining the council at their cow next week to talk about the budget. So just, you know, good information, encouraging people to watch. And then in terms of Athletic Fields, just to make one thing clear, some people are a little confused. This won't be part of the annual budget process right now. It wouldn't become part of that until it's actually approved. It'll be its own dedicated discussion moving forward, so it won't be blended in with everything else. So anticipate bringing some information soon. I'm very in support of the project, but as we said, we've got to look at creative funding. There are some big grants out there, so hopefully put some things together.
All right. And would you just very quickly explain for people potentially about bond processing and how that might, how that would kind of look? Like, how does that process work?
Sure. Well, first, we get, you know, I need some initial direction from the town council. You've asked me to come back just first, first up listing all the outstanding projects we might have to need to bond. If we're going to do a bond, you might blend in a couple other things with it, potentially. See where we're at on that list. That anticipate being in about a month. You'll probably give me direction from there. Hopefully, where I'll start working with our bond counsel, our bond attorney, as well as our financial advisor. For some scenarios, they'll put in some various scenarios of what we would pay under different options. You know, if it was just the high school, if it was all of it, et cetera, over a number of years, that, you know, I'll bring that back to the council. If the council was interested in moving forward, they'd give further direction to, you know, you'd have to think about the timeline, how much time is needed to educate the public and make sure the word's out there. You know, that'd be a decision of the council. But after that, it's, you know, the council, our team, both have to approve it going out to vote, and then it would actually be put on an election after that.
All right. That's wonderful information. Thank you. Counselor Bordelain?
Thank you. I guess, thanks for clarification, because I was looking a lot on the state website and things. When does the referendum have to be fully ready to submit to be able to make it on the ballot for November?
For November, I'd have to look at that. I'm not sure offhand.
Because that would be a target date that we need, like, now, like, in my opinion, to move forward. Also, the concern that the current council rules or stated that we can only bond, what did you say at the last meeting? We're only allowed to bond up to how much?
10% of the budget, but that is a policy.
Right.
It's not, the state allows for further.
So it seems to me that, you know, we need to get that on the agenda right away to get that up for discussion, would that need to be done?
That would be probably blended in with this discussion. You could always make that part of the larger motion to move forward. It's not a serious, you know, it's not a big obstacle. It's just simply a quick vote for the policy.
And then my last question, that could be done after, say, the referendum comes back, that everyone's in support of Fields. We could change it then?
Well, I don't think you'd go out for a public vote until you've decided the amount. So you would, you would already...
No, 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 I'm talking about the amount. I'm talking about changing the rules so that we could bond more. Could that be done after, or does it have to be done before?
Before it was for a public vote, it would need to be done.
Before?
Yeah.
All right. So I guess the question, if you could bring back, when do we actually have to have it all typed up, ready to go? Because, you know, again, you work with creating the agenda, so the efficiency, you know, in time has to be timed right. And we're already approaching budget season, and we're already in, even though this is not part of budget, but we're already going to be going into our busy time. And we're in February already, and when you really calculate it, we're not far from November. So we really do need to know, and if you don't have it tonight, that's fine, but an email as to when is the last dead stop that the clerk would have to have submitted to the state in order for it to go on the ballot, because that would be the hard stop.
Certainly.
Thank you.
All right. It is 8:20. Why don't we take a 10-minute recess?
Okay, it's eight thirty-nine and we're back from recess. Sorry for such a long recess. Up next is committee reports. Up first is committee of the whole, Mayor Franco. And Mr. Burr had already touched upon this, but on February eleventh, next Tuesday, is our committee of the whole meeting. The Board of Education will be here as a joint meeting. We've also, I guess, invited the chair of the RTM as well as the chair of the Education Committee on the RTM to participate. I had spoken to the chair of the Board of Ed, Beverly Washington, and we came up with some rules pertaining to the meeting. Just to make it clear that this is the superintendent's budget. This is not the Board of Ed's budget. We will and it will be three minutes allowed for each person to talk, to give your sort of statement on what you think of the budget, or how you feel things are going, or whatever you choose to discuss at that time. So, up next, personnel and appointments. Chair Jones.
I just had a quick and clarified question for you.
Your question?
On three minutes, so everyone in attendance that's at the table gets three minutes, is what you're saying?
Yes, we'll, we'll sit down all together.
So it's a full board, and the RTM reps and the council, and everyone gets three minutes.
Yep.
And then that's after she's gonna present her-
She'll present her budget, her budget.
All right, thank you.
The superintendent's budget, shall I say, not her.
All right, thank you.
Yep. I'm sorry, personnel and appointments. Chair Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We will be giving new reappointments and reappointments in new business. We had the meeting last, not last week, week before.
Okay.
I have a clarifying question.
Your question?
Ah, yes, let me just pull up my notes here. Sorry. I just wanted to ask, I watched the meeting, my question's about section six point five. Are we using that town council appointment policy for boards and commissions?
Can you read six point five?
Sure. Six point five, when a vacancy occurs for a regular meeting on an ABC for any reason, the town clerk should notify the chairperson of the ABC. If there are any alternate members serving on that ABC, chairperson shall discuss with, with the most senior experienced alternate as to their interest in moving up to a regular position, provided this does not result in a violation of minority representation requirements. If the member is interested and the chair recommends their moving up, the chair should complete a reappointment questionnaire, and the same procedure as described in section six point two, point six three, and six point four above shall apply. If the chair or the opinion that another alternate is more qualified, or the most senior member is not interested in becoming a regular member, the chair may recommend that the best qualified alternate, providing there is no conflict regarding minority representation. And then there's notes down here in the bottom. So my question, from everything I've read, is with Mr. Fittfull applying, did this process happen? And when I watched the meeting, it didn't seem as such, in my opinion, for that.
Tom Clerk, do you have any response?
What is the question for me?
The question is about how the town clerk is supposed to notify, I believe, the personnel appointments about a recommendation from a chair?
I guess I wasn't really directing it to the town clerk, I was directing it to the chair of the personal appointments.
Well, part of the, then what part of, are you asking about?
So did this process happen? So the chair would then, if I was the chair, I would say, yes, the town clerk, you know, or yes, I took this. I'm asking, did six point five occur?
But six point five is where the town clerk is supposed to-
But also, the chair, if I was the chair, I have an obligation, if that didn't happen, to not move forward with that on that day. So that's why I'm asking, did the chair make sure this was already done?
Mayor, can I weigh in?
Mr. Burr.
Six point five is typically for not the, you know, it's really for the chair to recommend for other positions. The chair himself, Mr. Pritchard, had put himself forward, that covered that rule right there, and then put it forward again after that. So it's not necessary beyond that.
I was talking about Mr. Fittfull, though. It wasn't about Mr. Pritchard at all, I'm referring for Mr. Fittfull.
No, but I'm saying, it was, it's within compliance.
Okay, so my, okay, and if there is any questions about the, basically, I, this has happened also on, in my opinion, with the historic district commission as well. People have been put forward. So I just have concerns, when, when was the appointments received? When was Mr. Fittfull's received? Like, because, again, we also got an email from Mr. Goodrich saying that his, he reapplied, and when I asked at the town council meeting, they said that they never received an application, and then he emailed us and showed us when he sent his application.
Town clerks, do you know when it was received?
For who? For-
For, for everyone that's reapplied. So I, my concern is, I'm greatly concerned-
This is like where you ask just like a simple question of the chair of the personal appointments, but you're-
Anything pertaining, it says in the rules. Anything pertaining to, so I'm, we're voting on something tonight, and I'm not on any appointment, any committees.
This is just a chair report, though.
Right, we were allowed to ask.
Right, you are, you are.
Okay.
So the memos were sent to, on January third.
For Mr. Fittfull?
Both of them. Fittfull and-
And Goodrich?
And Goetheer.
What about Goodrich?
Goodrich doesn't have one. That one was ta, we received one for him, I believe it was September or October.
That one was voted on last March. It's not eligible until the year, without six votes to bring it up.
So if a person re-appeals, it takes, they, the application can't move for six months?
It was already declined last March at the council level.
So six months. Okay, and that's in our rules somewhere?
It's the twelve-month rule.
And that's in our rules, though?
Yeah.
Okay.
Decisions made, cannot come back for one year.
Okay, and were the chairs notified of these vacancies in order to collaborate to move somebody up?
So I'm on, on charter waters here, because this is the first time that we've had the chair not be reappointed. So he wasn't notified.
Okay, 'cause my-
I mean, just the personnel and appointment committee.
So my understanding, with no disrespect, is that that person was still acting, as it was stated, I think by several counselors up here, that they were still in the acting position until it's replaced. So he was still the chair at the time when other people were, you know, biding to move up, or bidding to move up, or, you know, so I just don't know why that process. So I have concerns with that. You know, I feel like in a, in a lot of ways, we should not move forward with these personal appointments because of that. I don't think, in my opinion, the pro, in my opinion, and it's no disrespect, it's just what I'm, I've been digging through this for the last week, and I don't feel like the process has, has been followed per the town council appointment policy boards and commissions. And I know we want to be a stickler for rules, so they're very important, and I get that. I just also am concerned that, you know, the discussions, like, you know, at the meeting, as it was stated, you know, shouldn't the person who puts their application also says that they should be considered, meaning it should be fully discussed, like vetted on the thing? How come we're not doing that either?
It's not required, it's up to the chair.
We don't, we don't re-interview people who have already been interviewed. These are volunteers. They go through an interview process when they apply, and that's what we, that's all we need to do. So they have already been vetted onto that commission. So how they move around in it doesn't need a further interview, they've already done their interview.
Point of parliamentary inquiry.
Your inquiry?
So I, just based on the timekeeping purposes, I have not done, because this is normally simple questions, like a basic, you know, so I've never, I've never kept time for it. But this seems like debate to me, so I'm questioning, should I be keeping time for this, or call a point of order? And this can be discussed when the nominations are on the floor, or, so it's kind of like where I'm going right now.
I, I'm just asking questions, 'cause I'm trying to build-
So I would think that probably time should be kept during this period.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So, so my question is, I just find, I'm just concerned that that's the process. Everyone should have a re-stake at the game and be able to re-apply. Again, these are volunteers, and the volunteer is asking to move up. So usually, when you sit as an alternate, the expectation sometimes is that you want to kind of go up. That's why you're at the other, at the other seat, sitting as an alternate. So I get grave concerns about how this is all coming to be or not to be. And my other question is, so Mr. Pritchard was not notified, the acting chair was not notified about the pending vacancy and the process of moving a senior member up? Was not, there was no, like, dialogue for that? I guess is my question, based on six point five?
I believe from my recollection is that Mr. Pritchard's application, application came forward, it was not acted on, and he remains in the position until he is replaced by another, somebody else. Other people can apply for the position. It is considered, basically, he sits in there until this council would like to put somebody else in the place.
So he's acting chair, so he should have went through this process of six point five. I'm sorry, what, what are we saying?
Point of order.
What is your point of order?
I'm, I'm sorry, point of clarification. Is that what it is?
Your clarification.
Um, point of information, thank you. I'm gonna, I'll get it, yeah. I believe Mr. Pritchard put himself in, so the chair did speak.
Yes.
He put himself forward.
Right.
So-
And he wasn't chosen.
Correct. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was-
So he still remains in his position.
But that doesn't-
And anybody else could apply for that position now.
And Mr. Fittfull did, and what happened to that application?
It went forward.
I just, it didn't follow the process, though, where the chair had a chance to vet the most senior qualified person to move on, is my question. That's what this six point five policy states, is that once Mr. Fittfull didn't get the graces of this, you know, committee, then Mr. Fittfull put his name forward, and is wanting to be considered for the full-time position. So at that point, Mr. Pritchard being the chair-
From my recollection, two people put their names forward.
Right, you're using my time. Mr. Pritchard was, is the chair, and so he should have been re-notified, okay, you guys are not acting on his application, so therefore, Mr. Fittfull should have went through the process of six point five with Mr. Pritchard as the acting chair, because his seat has not been changed.
Can I answer this?
So-
Yes.
So that's an internal, to the planning and zoning commissions internally. It has nothing to do with personnel and appointments. That six point five is them deciding which ones go. Both people were put forward. I have them here. Mr. Pritchard chose not to sign these two documents. That's his prerogative.
He was never, he was never asked as a chair to do something for this process.
That's internal to them, has nothing to do with us. We don't, we don't ask them to do anything.
Right, but so that, so that, at that point, I can't follow, because you as the chair then have an obligation to make sure six point five is followed.
I don't chase down six point five, that's not my responsibility.
You should be, you chase down rules up here. Six point five should be followed.
I don't ask them to do anything.
But again, I'll take my, let me finish my time. So six point five, to me, was not followed. So if that came to need, it's not a fully vetted process. You as the chair then need to look, like, when I take in my work, in, in my office, I have to make all the things, I don't just take anything, right? I, I send it back and say, no, not stamping my name on that. So as me as a chair of what I'm doing at my, my working job, I will say to my coworkers, this doesn't fit section, section, this and this. So in this case, my field six point five was not followed, and I have major concerns at that process. So in good faith, we should have Mr. Pritchard as acting chair go back and fully vet Mr. Fittfull, and have that process move forward. Crazy enough, I also feel that the, you know, you know, the Mr. Pritchard's application is still in question as well, the process.
And they were, they, based on that application, it's my understanding and belief that since they did that on their own, they don't go through the Chair process, which is Rule 6.5.
Appreciate your input. Okay. Let's move on to the next item. We have Rules, Chair Parker, she's not here this evening. Moving on to Public Safety, Chair Rusk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Public Safety Committee met on January 28th. I reported on that at the last meeting. We will be discussing EMT funding policy at the end of our meeting tonight. That is it.
Okay. All right, moving on to new business. First up, 2025-3-1, Various Appointments and Reappointments. This is on page 21 of our packet. Chair Jones.
2025-38, Various Appointments and Reappointments. Resolution making the following appointments and reappointments to authorize agencies, authorities, boards, commissions, and committees. Resolve that the Town Council appoints the following individuals to the authorized ABCs as noted. Appointment Daniel Smith to Water Pollution Control Authority. Appointment of Karen Morton to Citizens Police Committee. Appointment of Lauren Gothier to Planning and Zoning Commission. Reappointment of Cindy Barry to Complete Streets Advisory Commission, Committee, sorry. Reappointment of Jeffrey Stephs, Stephs?
James.
James.
James, James Stephs. Parks Recreation Committee, and reappointment of William Ferguson to Historic District Commission. So moved.
Moved by Jones, seconded by Pacino. Counselor Borderline.
So I guess I'm confused by the Town Manager's comment. I guess, I'd love for an attorney opinion on that, through the Town, through the Mayor, through the Town Manager, to get something regarding that.
Dan?
To clarify that we are following proper procedure, because, again, there's no way that you should, just because they applied on their own, Mr. Fithill is a standing alternate on the committee, therefore he should follow 6.5. Mr. Pritchard is Acting Chair, because he has not been replaced, therefore 6.5 would apply, therefore all of 6.5 should have been executed fully. And it says if there's any questions about the composition of the appointed Town Board, the Town Attorney makes the ruling on it. So I, that's what I'm asking. So through the Town, through the Mayor, through the Town Manager, can we get some ruling on this from the attorneys, please?
The attorneys have already looked at that prior.
Can we get something in writing? I don't have anything.
Well, that's, the body can ask for that anytime they want. There's several thousand dollars for a written opinion, so I do a hard request.
So we, so we don't want to do that? Okay. Do I have any support up here? Does anyone want the opinion of the attorney? No?
I think the verbal was fine.
The verbal's fine?
For me.
Okay. All right, well, I'm just doing my due diligence here. I think it needs to be written out. This definitely does not seem, I seem like we're on a weird trajectory here with personnel appointments, in my opinion, as far as like the process. Seems very vague, kind of people being, you know, in my opinion, not being pulled up from alternates, looking for, you know, as it said, new, new people. You know, I, just, you know, we can barely fill all of our boards and commissions, and yet we're not allowing people to move up that are alternates, telling them, nope, we're looking for new people. Like, I, I just don't know how that sends the message to the community that we are in need of volunteers and that we, you know, I don't know, I just, and it's, and it's, it's just frustrating for me. And I, I'm just gravely concerned by the qualifications that we're just leaving on the table with the folks that were just, just saying, no, not putting them forward. And then it was stated in that meeting that a lot of people didn't know Mr. Fithill. Well, that's where the interview should have happened, if you didn't. If you said that, you don't really know him. You know Gothier. Well, we know Gothier, right? We know her from politics, we know her, she ran the Republican ticket, she ran the independent ticket, you know, she ran against the, you know, Chris Connolly in many elections, we know her from the community, she served on our, you know? So the concern is that, did we take the time to get to know Mr. Fithill? And I feel like that is what, a non, in my opinion, to be non-biased on an appointment, is that we should be making sure he's getting a fair interview. He's served his time as an alternate, and he should have a chance to get the same amount of airtime as Gothier did. And if, I mean, that's, that's just frustrating. Like, who would want to apply to anything now? And they don't feel like, and they put it forward, if you already have what look like, you know, I don't know, like, what's, what's the, what's the, what's the holdup? Why are we, do we have other people lined up? I mean, breaking down, I, I don't see other people applying. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Merritt.
Well, seems we're going to use names for positions, which I definitely am against. You have a gentleman in there that was removed, who's been there for probably 20 years. So people coming in the door are gonna say, well, you're not getting anybody out, why should I even bother coming in? I think some people need to think about what they're saying before they say it.
Is there any more conversation on this?
I'll take my time.
Board, Counselor Borderline.
I mean, I am thinking very loudly about what I'm saying. I don't know if you're referring to me or not, you know?
You want to start with me?
All right, can we please stop? And you do not, please don't direct your comments directly to him. He spoke in general. And you specifically spoke to him.
You said we shouldn't speak about councilors in general in the past, there's a point of order. So with that, I didn't call a point of order, but maybe next time I will.
Well, there were already some on the floor, and I spoke.
Okay. Again, we have to follow the process. And, you know, we as a council should be making the final votes on these, it shouldn't be fully just decided in the committee, it should be the committee's recommendation on who to pull forward. And I just feel like, then what are, what are we doing up here as a nine-member body if we have no say in the name that's being brought forward? Like, and the process, you know, people are applying for these positions, asking to be reappointed into their positions, and, you know, we're just, you know, kind of, I don't know, just not reappointing. And, again, we need to look at 6.5, we should be following 6.5. And there are a lot of things here that could be looked at under a better microscope, in my opinion. I think a written opinion is appropriate. It says that we can request that per our policy here. And, you know, just, there's a lot of unanswered questions for me. I'd like to make a motion on the floor. I would like to remove Gothier's name from the list, to have this go back to the committee, and to have 6.5 properly followed, vetted. So basically, I don't know if that would be, just, yeah, just removed, because it wouldn't be tabling, it would just be, send it back so that we can follow the proper process that, in my opinion, has not been followed. That would be my recommendation, it would give the committee a chance to make sure 6.5 is properly followed, as many people have spoke tonight.
I'm not hearing a second.
Point of parliamentary inquiry.
Your parliamentary inquiry.
If we were to do that, what is the role of the Personnel Appointments Committee if we send it back after it's already been voted upon three times? Because in my, I'll leave it that.
What is your question?
So what is the role, if we send it back to the Personnel Appointments Committee, which has already had a 3 to 0 to 0 vote to recommend it to the council for full vote, and we vote to send it back to the Personnel Appointments Committee, what is the role of the Personnel Appointments Committee in that situation?
They would, once again, do exactly what they probably did the last meeting, review, look at, and then send it back to the committee, this council, their recommendation.
So we're just going, sorry.
Point of clarification?
Your question.
So I just want to make sure my thing is properly interpreted. What I would ask is that 6.5 is followed, so then the clerk would let Mr. Pritchard know that, you know, the process for Mr. Fithill would be followed.
Hi.
Chair Jones and the other members would make sure that process is followed when, before making a decision on a candidate. That's what I'm asking. So 6.5 would be followed, because Mr. Pritchard should be involved in that, and notified in the proper chain of 6.5. So that's what I'm asking. I'm not saying we won't come up the same outcome. I'm saying let's just follow the policy. So let's send it back, make sure 6.5 is followed. And the process is the Chair of the Personnel Appointments. Just because, you don't have to act on anybody's personal appointment on any given day, you can say, hmm, at any point, it didn't follow 6.5, you can just not act on it on that particular day if you chose to. So that's what I'm asking. That's all. You may come up the same outcome. That's all I have.
Thank you. Counselor Gajewski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It is my understanding and comfort that all the policies have been followed properly. I understand that there is debate and questions regarding it, but I feel I have done my due diligence, and I am confident of proceeding forward as is. And then in regards to, I'll speak on one of the applicants, Lauren Gothier.
Point of inquiry, or whatever. There was no, there was no second, so this should be.
I, I'm...
There is no, there is no amendment motion, it's the main motion on the floor.
Yeah, I'm discussing on the main motion.
All right.
Continue.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to speak on the application for the Planning and Zoning Commission. I watched, I've watched countless Planning and Zoning Commission meetings with alternates and full members, and of the applicants, I feel Lauren Gothier, to fill a five-year term, was the best candidate, which is why I supported her in the Personnel Appointments Committee, and I will support her on the floor. And I am full confidence of the application.
Thank you. Counselor Rusk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to go back a little bit. There was a motion made for Mr. Pritchard. There was no second, which per Roberts' rules, you need a second to have discussion. Therefore, it did not move forward. There again was a motion to suspend the rules at this council to put Mr. Pritchard's name on. It received three votes? Four votes? Four votes.
It failed.
It failed. And I, I was one of those who voted for it, so it failed. So at this point, Mr. Pritchard would need, we would need six votes from this council, there are seven of us here, to move his name forward. I think the, the, I don't want to speak for other people, but I think the, the council has spoken on this. There was a statement made that there's no say by the council in who, who gets moved forward, and I don't think that's an accurate statement, because the council did have a vote. It was a vote to add, to suspend the rules and add him to the agenda, and that did not pass. So we are here now, and I think that the people who are on this list are well-qualified, including Lauren Gothier and I, and everybody else on this list. I would like the opportunity to vote on this and move forward.
I'd like to make a motion on the floor.
Your motion.
I'd like to put Mr. Fithill's name on the floor to be considered for being moved up to a full member.
You need to suspend the rules, I believe, for this? You need to make a motion to suspend the rules to add his name to our agenda.
Right, and that's where I, I think, for clarifying, that's where I feel like the council doesn't have the decision, we have to do, we have to suspend the rules, it's just not given to us. So that's what I mean by the council doesn't have the agenda.
Am I correct, Mr. Burt? We need to suspend the rules?
Point of order. There was a point of order, but to continue on with this discussion is inappropriate, in my mind.
Are you making a motion right now to suspend the rules?
I'm just asking, so...
Please state your, your motion.
So to clarify, in order to put a name down, the only way to do so after the personnel appointments is with the suspension of the rules, is that correct?
As far as I understand.
So that's what I'm, yeah, right, so that's, so yes, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules to consider Mr. Fithill for being moved up from, to a full member.
I'll second.
I'd like a roll call vote, please?
There's discussion, right?
None, suspension.
It's a 2/3rds vote.
Right. So the motion on the floor is to suspend the rules to consider Mr. Fithill from alternate to full member. Motion by Borderline, seconded by Gajewski. We are going to take a roll call vote.
Point of clarification?
Yes.
To consider or to, I, I'm confused on, are we considering, like, what does that mean, consider him? Are we taking out Lauren Gothier's name and putting him in? Or are we voting on both of them? I'm confused.
My interpretation would be that we would consider Mr. Fithill first, and if he, his motion fails, Ms. Gothier would be the one to then get voted on. Am I correct, Mr. Burt?
So we would be voting on the whole slate with Mr. Fithill's name?
We will, we will, working, are you looking to replace Gothier with Fithill, is that correct?
So point of clarification?
For this purpose.
Yeah, so point of clarification, so personnel appointments sends the names forward, and the only way the, I'm asking, how can the council get a name on here if they want? Since the council supposedly has a say, how do we get our say?
This is it.
Okay, so then however that would be, is what I want.
Thank you. So, so the motion on the floor is to suspend the rules, we will consider Mr. Fithill over Ms. Gothier, and I think we should take the vote on Mr. Fithill first. And if he passes, then Ms. Gothier would no longer be on this docket, and we would vote on the whole.
Thank you.
Point of inquiry?
Your inquiry.
If Mr. Fithill fails, he may, does that knock him out for a year of ever coming back? I mean, he is another alternate on that committee, so by voting on him out, we have knocking him out for a year?
That's correct, without six votes to bring him back.
And he cannot come back, even if he wants to come back, see, he would have to wait a year. He's sitting there, he's another alternate, somebody else on the Planning and Zoning may, may decide to leave or not re-up on the time. So we're actually affecting him by voting on him, because we will knock him off for a year, when in reality, he can come back at any time.
Let me fix your terminology, not knock him off.
I mean...
But we, he will...
Eliminating him from voting, applying.
Mayor, can I just clarify? Just, just to clarify, the 2/3rds vote would allow a vote on Fithill replacing, so you'll have the 2/3rds vote first, if that passes, then you'll vote on Fithill in the queue with the rest. So the first part is to vote whether you're going to suspend the rules. Yeah, just want to make sure that was clear.
First, suspend the rules, then we will vote on Fithill first, then if he fails, we would vote on the list as is. If he passes, then Ms. Gothier's name would be removed, and we would vote on it altogether with Mr. Fithill on there. As, please, just a moment. Mr. Jones, you are, can you state one more time? If, so what I mean, my answer is, if...
If Mr. Fithill fails in his vote...
Fails, it will take six members to bring him back within the next year. That is correct, if he is voted on this evening.
If he's voted out, and so...
Not voted out.
I mean, not...
If he does not pass.
Right.
If there is an action taken tonight, he will not be able to be voted on again for a year unless there are six councilors willing to bring his name forward.
Right. So in the course of that year, if somebody else on the Planning and Zoning decides not to, to come back, and there's an opening for him, he's not eligible for that.
He is eligible if six, if six members are willing to bring him forward.
But if six aren't?
Then he can't come forward.
Then he can't come back for a year, so...
Yes, it is, it is something to take into consideration, that's correct.
Okay.
Counselor Borderline.
So first, we have to suspend the rules, if that doesn't pass, that will not make him ineligible, just that first attempt to suspend the rules. So if that fails, which, unless, unless three of the people from the committee have a change of heart...
By attempting to suspend the rules to put his name forward for a vote, it is an action. action.
No, but I, does not.
And if it fails, it is an action, just as though when we did with Mr. Pritchard, there was a suspension of the rules to bring his name forward to for a vote again, failed, which then made it an action.
Wait.
I respectfully disagree with that. I think the first vote is safe, sorry, to suspend. I think it's not until you actually vote on them. You're just first thing if you can even vote on them.
So let me clarify that with you, because my interpretation was that at personnel and appointments, Mr. Pritchard did not go forward, came to our council.
You're right, you're correct. Yes. Sorry.
It is an action. If we try to attempt to suspend the rules tonight and it fails, it is an action to try and vote on Mr. Fithell.
Can we, can we take a recess and get clarifying on that? Because just because we did it at the last meeting doesn't mean it's correct. I don't think it's right per what I read.
I, I did talk to the attorneys about that. If, any other motion that would be to get to that same end result would be out of order without the six votes.
Right, so my, what I read before the meeting was if we suspend, because we as a council don't have another way to inject any other opinion than what the committee gives us unless we suspend the rules. Is that correct? I'm just trying to make sure I'm understanding this. Is that correct? Outside of the three-member body.
You can bring, you can try and suspend the rules and bring somebody forward if you don't like what the committee brings forward. Yes, that's correct.
So they have to get a two-thirds vote, which is a larger majority, just to get a name on the floor. What I read is that doesn't count against someone being reconsidered later.
That is not how it's been interpreted, and I think it's been.
See, and that's why I think we're not.
Counselor Borderline, you are getting into debate now.
I'm asking.
I will say that the town manager has repeatedly said.
I did, I just.
That this is something that our town attorneys have reviewed, and this is their advice on how this works.
I don't think it was.
And I'm going by the town attorney's advice at this moment.
And I'm just saying, we've been wrong before, town attorneys, no offense. We are, no one's perfect or above the law or God.
Counselor Borderline, you are going into debate again.
No, I'm going back to.
That's not a question.
My concern is, are we sure? Because this is concerning, and I ask that we take a recess.
I will say there is a motion on the floor to suspend the rules.
I'd like to motion for a recess, to look at this a little further.
Fine. We will take a.
Five minutes, at least.
Five-minute recess.
I just want to, because it doesn't mean that the last time we did it right, so. And I think we should.
A five-minute recess. It is 9:18.
Thank you.
Okay, it's nine twenty-seven, we're back from recess. Mr. Burt, has there been any kind of resolution during this break?
Yeah, once any actions taken, it will take six votes to do it. So if you do it to, well, to bring it back, so two-thirds vote, once you act on it, it would take six to bring it back again. Though, just as a reminder, it takes five to appoint anyone, it's one more person in the future, if it does fail.
Yep. Thank you. Counselor Gajewski.
I'd like to retract my second.
Thank you.
And then Madam Mayor, can I take my second speaking turn?
You may.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So it is, so I do believe individuals should have a vote, but what consequences of the suspension of the rules is they can't come back for a year. So that is the unfortunate reality, even though there is going to be, even though there could have been a vote on somebody else for any other position, if they fail here in this moment, and a suspension of the rules counts as action, then they would be suspended for a year, and I don't think that's fair to do to our volunteers, so I would like to proceed as normal.
Thank you. Counselor Bordelain, you've already had two turns.
We had a different motion on the floor.
It was a mo-
The motion, the second has been rescinded.
There was-
Your second has been rescinded.
Sure.
The main motion is now on the floor.
Clarifying question?
Your question.
So, I'm just trying to understand what Counselor Gajewski stated through you. If we don't suspend the rules, it's, as this town manager stated, it's gonna be the same voting, there's only one councilor, so it's not much different, right? Is that what the manager said? Five versus-
Counselor Gajewski just made his statement, his own personal statement. I don't, it wasn't through me. He just made it in general.
I'm saying, I'm saying through you.
You have no time left.
So my clarifying question is, as the town manager stated, it would be, if we suspend the rules, it's five, it would make it six votes versus five, it's really a wash if you suspend or not.
If we suspend the rules at this time, it will take five to suspend the rules out of this council right here.
I was talking about bringing it back up.
To put Mr. Fiffle up for a vote tonight.
I'm talking about to reconsider.
I, I am getting there, please, can you give me the grace to actually be able to If it fails, it will take six to be able to bring him back for a revote at any time in the future.
So it's the same, though? So it's not really, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Thank you.
So it doesn't change anything?
All right, I'm gonna take a moment to speak myself, because there's been a lot of talk tonight about how this has all played out. I want to address some of the comments that I heard today, of such things like, his, the position being open, and if somebody's, I mean, there's a lot been said. I'm just gonna state my own personal beliefs. I was not on the Personnel and Appointments Committee. The actions they took were their own. Do I support some of the things that Counselor Jones has said at this meeting, in previous past couple of meetings, actually, in his, his standing on it? I absolutely do. I will say that these positions, when people are serving for twenty years in a position, these are not lifetime terms, and councils have the right, when somebody's term expires, to put other people in there. And even if there's nobody to put in there at this moment, it's okay to let somebody continue to serve until somebody comes forward to serve, because maybe, at times in our community, it is time, sometimes, for change. If a committee makes a recommendation, I'm hearing a referral being made that all decisions have to be made here at the council, that no matter what, whatever goes through, everything that goes through Personnel and Appointments has to come here at the council. I'm not supportive of that. Why have a committee, then? Why have any committees? Why don't we just do everything here? That's not what I'm about. We have these committees, and they are sent there for those purposes. I will say, that, let me tell you, we are all very much in tune, I'll speak for myself, I'm very much in tune with the community, and what they talk about, and how they think about our community, and have I received so many comments about their thoughts of some of these committees? Absolutely. Does that also sway how I make judgments? Absolutely. So, there may be people in our community who do not like the decisions of some of our committees, or even of this council, but, and that is their prerogative, but I think everybody up here is trying to do their best for their community, in their own way, and I will say that, it is, these are volunteer positions, it's been said numerous times, and honestly, if somebody's not put on one committee, they can actually apply to other committees. There are lots of them, lots of committees, and they can join another committee, where their services would be utilized there as well, and we'd appreciate that as well. But sometimes, you have to shake some things up, and I'm okay with that. So with that, I see no more hands, and let's take a vote on the motion that is on the floor, with the people that are listed right here. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I abstain.
That passes six to zero to one. Up next, two zero two five dash six two dash one, Town Manager Contract Extension. This is on page twenty-two. I have not, you know what, I'm gonna, people have had turns, we're gonna go to Counselor Pacino. Would you like to take that one?
I would. It's a good subject. Item two zero two five dash sixty-two, Town Manager Contract Extension. Resolution to approve an updated Town Manager's contract, whereas the Town Council desires to make changes to the Town Manager's contract now, and therefore be it resolved, that the mayor, that the mayor is authorized to sign an updated contract with the Town Manager, with an effective date of February fourth, 2025, to include the following. One, set a term of the contract to five years, with the term ending on February third, 2030. Two, increase the payment of deferred compensation slash health savings plan slash Connecticut five twenty-nine plan, or other similar plan, by fifteen hundred dollars, one thousand five hundred dollars, with such deferred compensation payments being payable upon contract, start, excuse me, being payable upon contract start date, and on January first, annually thereafter. Three, set vacation accrual to two days per month, so move.
Second, Russ.
Move by Pacino, seconded by Russ.
Counselor Bordelain.
Yeah, I won't be supporting this, and I just, yeah, I'll just state that.
Counselor Gajewski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I will be supporting this, I think our Town Manager does a great job, and for those watching at home and seeing in the amendments, in that there is an increase in deferred compensation, and vacation accrual to two days per month, I would like to remind the public at home that Manager Burt during last year's budget did decline his salary increase, and this, I think, is a reasonable compliment to supplement as a thank you, so that's why I'll be in favor of this contract extension.
Thank you. Counselor Bordelain.
What is the current salary?
Around one eighty, high one eighties.
Yeah. Right, so, I don't know, I, like I said, I'm not, I mean, it was stated tonight that sometimes it's good to get new ideas and new perspectives, and, I don't know, I just feel like I cannot support it this time, because I think, you know, sometimes I just feel like maybe there's different directions or opportunities.
Are you all set?
Yeah, good.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, so I'm just gonna let everybody know at home that we had gone into executive session with Mr. Burt, and had done evaluation on him, and I think he came out pretty favor, favorably, in the scoring process, and I think these are, term contracts going to five years, it's a very typical and normal thing to keep somebody at their contract terms, I think fifteen hundred dollars for this kind of deferred compensation, and to, and his vacation accrual is very on par. So I thank you, Mr. Burt, for all that you do for our town, I think you work extremely tirelessly with all that you do, you are available, it seems to be almost twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, it's shocking how quickly you take care of the work that comes before you, and your response time to, I think, at least myself and some of the residents who reach out to you. So I thank you for all of that. All right, let's take a vote on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I'm opposed.
You're opposed?
Yeah.
That passes six to one to zero. Up next, two zero two five dash six seven dash one, Connecticut Department of Public Health. They said it.
Peg Pisha.
Peg Pisha Grant. This is on page twenty-three. Counselor Bordelain, you wanna take that one?
We've already run over that before, haven't we? We've addressed that.
Okay, Counselor Merritt, would you like to take that one?
Resolve that the town, Groton Town Council hereby authorizes the Town Manager or his designee to apply for and accept grant funding in the amount of seventy-three thousand two hundred and twelve dollars from the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection and Public Utilities Regulatory Authorities, Public Education and Government Programming, and Education Technology Investment Account, which will allow Groton Municipal Television to upgrade and enhance the community's viewing experience of government access, and refer the item to the RTM per Rule six point five point three.
Second? Move by Merritt, seconded by Russ. All right, not seeing any hands, let's take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? That passes seven to zero to zero. Up next, page twenty-four of our packet, two zero two five dash six four dash one, OPDS Position Reclassification. And just to make it clear for everybody at home, who may not know this, we have gone through all of this in our committee of the whole meetings, and had full discussions on all of these, and had passed them to our Town Council meeting, for final approval. Counselor Gajewski, would you like to take that one?
No, of course, I would, Madam Mayor. Item two zero two five dash six four, OPDS Position Reclassification. Resolution approving the reclassification of the OPDS Code Enforcement Officer/Planner One to Assistant Zoning Official/Zoning Enforcement Officer. Be it resolved, the Town Council hereby approves the reclassification of the OPDS Code Enforcement Officer/Planner One to an Assistant Zoning Official/Zoning Enforcement Officer, effective October one, 2024, at a grade level four, which is currently seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and one dollars to ninety thousand six hundred and thirty-two dollars per annum.
Second? Move by Gajewski, seconded by Russ. Counselor Bordelain.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure. Oh, I looked at something else, there, I jumped ahead, sorry.
All right, seeing no other hands, let's take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes seven to zero to zero. Up next, two zero two five dash five two dash one, DUI Enforcement Program Grant for FY twenty-four through twenty-five, this is on page twenty-five of our packet. Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Twenty twenty-five dash fifty-two DUI Enforcement Program Grant for FYI, or for FY twenty-two five, twenty-two four to twenty-two five. Resolve to authorize Town Manager John Burt to act on behalf of the Town of Groton to accept the grant funding in the amount of nineteen thousand three hundred dollars to execute any and all documents, and to perform all acts and things deemed necessary to appropriate to carry out the terms of the grant program, and refer the matter to the RTM per Rule six point five point three, so move.
Second? Goodbye Jones, seconded by Bordelain. Counselor Bordelain.
I just wanna, again, just restate and just clarify through you, through the Town Manager, that if by chance, with all these things, and grants, and money's possibly not coming, if it doesn't come, we're not gonna start to plan on, like, we're allocating this just in case it doesn't come.
That is correct.
So we only, we're not gonna say, oh, because we didn't get this grant, now we threw the nineteen thousand dollars on top of this, and now we have to try to fund that.
Correct.
Okay, that's, because I'm in full support of this with the grant, I think it's great, but like, as many people said, it's trying times, and I just don't wanna add nineteen thousand to our budget if we're not gonna get the grant for whatever reason. Thank you.
All right, seeing no other hands, let's take a vote, I'm two zero two five dash five two dash one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Passes seven to zero to zero. Up next, two zero two five dash ten dash one, Parking Fee Revision to Ordinance. This is on page twenty-six. Counselor Russ, would you like to take that one?
Yes. Can I actually skip this one, because I'll be doing the next one?
Oh, sure, let's go to Counselor Pacino, would you like to take that one on page twenty-six?
I will. I was just gonna make the same suggestion. Item twenty twenty-five, Tac ten, Parking Fee Revision to Ordinances. Resolve, be it resolved, that the Town Council hereby sets a public hearing date for March fourth, 2025, for the increase in Groton's parking violation fine to fifty dollars with a one hundred dollar late fee, to be revised in Section eleven, Tac fifty-six, one, of Groton's Code of Ordinances, and to increase Groton's fire lane parking violation to one hundred dollars with a two hundred dollar late fee, to be revised in Section seven, Tac thirty-one, of Groton's Code of Ordinances.
Second?
So move.
Second? Move by Pacino, seconded by Russ. Counselor Bordelain.
I mean, I don't know if it's pertinent or not, but to me, it would make sense that, the way it reads, it just doesn't read well, to me, that a fine two fifty dollars, two fifty from what? Like, you know what I mean, if someone, you know, comes back and looks at this, like, what are we moving it from to? What is it currently? Twenty-five dollars? I know that, right? But no one else does.
Yeah, it'll have to be restated later in the full, after the public hearing, this is just for the public hearing.
Yeah, I just think it should, I just think that should be in here, because for a public hearing, the average person doesn't watch these meetings, I mean, you know, like, I mean, we have a voting population of forty thousand people, maybe, maybe five thousand watch. Again, if they're coming out to a public hearing, they should know what the fine is at currently, because I've honestly never gotten a Groton part, I didn't know it until I joined the council.
Actually, as part of that process for the public hearing, we have to put out the newspaper notice and other public notices, it'll be very detailed, it'll have all the information.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, because I think what we're voting on should be, not just the resolve, so I just wanted, noted for the minutes, that I did make that recommendation, that it should be in there, just in case it's not in the paper, but it should say twenty-five to fifty, with a hundred dollar late fee, what's the current late fee?
Let's see, I believe it's fifty, twenty-five and fifty, going fifty and a hundred.
Right, so I think, you know, the average person doesn't even get parking tickets in town, I mean, most people that live here, it's usually outsiders, in some may, but I think we should be very clear, what are we moving to, and what are we going to, for open disclosure and full transparency, and the via, the fire parking violation is currently at what, fifty?
Yes.
Going to a hundred, and then the late fee was a hundred going to two hundred?
Yes.
Yeah, so I think, just-
And it was fully explained at the cow, last cow, all that information was, and there'll be in the advertisements, it'll be in the next agenda.
Correct.
If people look at one agenda, they're gonna know to another agenda.
I just wanna make sure in the public hearing, though, when it's posted, it's there, because people are gonna go digging for the other stuff, like, they wanna see public hearing and what it is, and I think it's just really important that those numbers are open, and, because like I said, I didn't even know that a parking violation in a fire lane was fifty dollars currently, you know, so I just think that should be very clear in our ask, so everyone's aware. Thank you.
Correct. The motion on the floor is to set a public hearing date, basically, it's not about the details that are gonna go in the newspaper, that usually typically is always in full detail of the full item that, and motion that's coming before the council. So this is just simply to set the public hearing date for March fourth of 2025, that the violations will go up to fifty, and the late fee's a hundred. The details will be there, and that's typically always done. Counselor Bordelain.
Yeah, I understand typically, again, we're human, and errors happen, in the past, there has been things not posted, I'm not saying under this clerk-
Counselor Bordelain, let me, let me just say that, no, I wanna tell you-
I have a right to say-
The motion on the floor is to set a public hearing date. It is not about actually the hearing, what's going to be in the newspaper, and anything else, this is tip, this is simply to set a public hearing date.
Okay, so I wanna restate that, in the past, we have made corrections here, asking to make sure that things were articulated correctly, to make sure that we're all on the same page, because we don't work after hours. So here, we're saying, yes, we're setting the public hearing, and I'm asking that when that public hearing is set, that this information is in there, and it has, not under you, but I'm just saying, sometimes information was missing, and one of the things I hear is, what is the current numbers, and what are they moving to? I'm just making sure, and stating on the record, so it's on there, that I asked, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other hands, let's take a vote. On two zero two five dash ten dash one, Parking Fee Revision, Jordan, setting a public hearing date. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes seven to zero to zero. Up next, two zero two five dash nine one, EMS Funding Policy. This is on page twenty-seven. Counselor Russ, would you like to take this one?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item two zero two five dash nine one, Resolution Adopting the Emergency Medical Service EMS Funding Policy. Therefore be it resolved, that the Town Council hereby adopts the Emergency Medical Services EMS Funding Policy as recommended by the Town Council's Public Safety Committee.
Second? Goodbye Russ, seconded by Bordelain. Thank you. Would you like to give us a link of what's, what's happened with this?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. So the Public Safety Committee, which consists of Counselor Merritt, Counselor Pacino, myself, met with Chester Knickie, Chuck Knickie, and Robert Demare, I'm sorry, McDermott from Groton Ambulance, Todd McDonald from Mystic River Ambulance, and Bob Holdsworth, who is from the Holdsworth Group. On probably three occasions, I believe, I'm sorry, I don't have that. So our goal was to come up with an equitable, equitable, sorry it's late, way to fund our ambulances. So every year, the ambulance has come before us, come before the Town Council and the RTM, and ask for funding. We wanted to set a process to make sure that it was equitable, and this was a referral made by the mayor. So I'm gonna give a little background, and then we'll go forward on how we made this decision. So per CGS, Section nineteen A dash one seventy-nine, this act requires that all municipalities within the state of Connecticut be covered by an emergency medical service. The EMS agencies in Connecticut operate under regulations that require them to respond, treat, and transport before ever knowing whether they will receive a reimbursement for the transportation, or how much they will be reimbursed. So if a nine-one-one call comes out, and they are asking for ambulance service, the ambulance has to go, no matter what. And that's not saying they wouldn't want to go, it's just they have to go, that is, that's the law. The EMS system in Connecticut is funded through a combination of tax revenues and billing Medicare, Medicaid, TriCare, commercial insurance plans, and the patients themselves for completed transit, transportation. So if, the main point in that one is its completed transports. So if they go to, if the ambulance gets a call to a location, the patient refuses transport, or the patient says, isn't there, whatever the reasoning, that the patient is, doesn't get transported, they get zero money. So that doesn't mean they're not going, it doesn't mean they're not providing any service, they are just not being able to bill. So the retail billing rates are set annually by the State of Connecticut Department of Public Health, as well as third-party insurers. The actual reimbursement rate varies widely from payer to payer. Additionally, all reimbursement is based upon level of medical necess, of medically necessary care provided to the patient, not based on the level of personnel that respond to the call. Regardless of the actual number of requests for service, or nine-one-one calls, only completed calls result in billable events. So I think we've all seen, well, we've all seen in our budgets before, that the, the rates vary between Mystic River and between Groton ambulance services on what they, what they are requesting. Mystic River, when we looked at it, we took, we took it approximately in half of their nine-one-one calls, because half of them go to the Stonington area, half of them come to us. All of Groton calls come to us. So what we did was, we looked at a way to, a formula to fund them equally every year, and make sure that everybody was getting the same. So last year, Groton Ambulance received three thousand dollars for five thousand five hundred calls-
Three hundred thousand.
I'm sorry, what did I say?
Three hundred thousand.
I'm sorry. Groton Ambulance received three hundred thousand.
This is on page twenty-nine of our packet, for everybody who's paying, who's following, it's-
For five thousand five hundred calls, at a cost of fifty-four thousand forty-five dollars per nine-one-one response.
Fifty-four dollars. Oh, you are, it is getting, it is late. What did I say? A lot more. Okay. Fifty-four dollars. Okay, let me try this again.
It is late, I'm sorry, people.
That's okay.
Okay. So in the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget, the Groton Ambulance received three hundred thousand dollars for five thousand five hundred calls, at a, for a cost of fifty-four dollars and forty-five cents per nine-one-one response. So that is what we paid them. For Mystic River Ambulance, at the same time, they received eighty-five thousand dollars for one thousand four hundred calls, at a cost of sixty dollars and seventy-one cents per nine-one-one. So after looking at this, both groups agreed to the process, that it would be a flat rate, times the projected nine-one-one response would be the subsidy requested. That flat rate could change over time, based on how much they are not getting back in, in fees, but they are agreeing to the same amount for Mystic River and for Groton Ambulance. If you look at Mystic River, at sixty dollars per projected call, they are actually going to get less money than they had last year. And I said, you know, I asked, like, are you okay with this? And he said, absolutely, it's fair. And Mystic River, or, I'm sorry, Groton Ambulance would go up. So, we had looked at another way of doing this, it was much more complicated, could change and swing significantly every year, so we decided that this was a much easier way to move forward and fund them equitably. Do you want to add anything to that?
I thought that was very good. And just to add, I've received the budget request for the new year, they utilized this formula, it's $60 per call, so same, so it's the same per call for Mystic Ambulance, and just a slight increase for Groton Ambulance to equal the per-call amount.
Counsel Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to thank the Public Safety Committee for coming up with a very simple and direct formula for doing this. I think it's, and to have both parties to agree to it, I think it gives us, and with this formula, they basically came to kind of where they were before, or close enough into the ballpark. It gives us a very easy formula to work with. If their calls go way up, or they go way down, it's easy to adjust it. So I will be supporting this, I think it's, it's one of the simplest solutions that we have come with on anything. We did a similar situation with all the fire districts, but this is just beautiful in its simplicity. And, what, this is my, one, two, three, one, two, three, four, my fifth budget, maybe? This is always a stickling point. The Groton ambulances and how much we pay them is always something that we have just long, difficult discussions on, of trying to come up with a number, and this is so simple and easy, I think it's, to me, it's just, it's a no-brainer. And I will be supporting this, and I just thank Counsel Rusk and the Public Safety Committee for just, in a very short amount of time, coming up with a great solution. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Gajewski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you to Chair Rusk and the Public Safety Committee for working with our ambulance services, it is greatly appreciated. I do have a question, though. It says in the policy, it says, "The Town Council shall begin annual budget deliberation utilizing the adopted budget, adopted formula, flat rate times projected 911 responses." Makes perfect sense. My question is, how do we, does, who sets the, who sets the dollar amount for what that flat rate is?
The services do, based on what they're seeing, like, for instance, after the 24 budget was set, Groton Ambulance had to put in pay increases, you know, so they kind of came out backwards that year. So they, as a reminder, they give us their really detailed budgets every year, they will, they say why and how they came up, when they come in, why they came up with that number for the year. They also are estimating, based on trends, the number of transports. Someone did ask me earlier, what happens if they get less transports? Well, they have the same cost no matter what. If they get less transports, they're missing revenue, and still, and even more so than money. So this makes perfect sense to me.
So, just follow-up question to that through the mayor. So every year, when you go into budget time, that number, whether it's $60, $61, that will get set through the budget?
Yeah, they send, for instance, right after this meeting, Public Safety, they each sent Mystic Ambulance, Groton Ambulance, sent their requests, they sent their full budgets, so you can see year to year what the differences are, you know, so you have an idea of where they're going up in costs. You know, it would be very apparent, they said we need $200 per, you know, for each call. But then they put in their, you know, what they're requesting per call, the number of calls they, they estimate. And then you determine, we start at that point, but it's up to the council, and then they're up to do whatever you want.
Okay, and for those, and that's a good point, what the town manager just said, that this doesn't lock the council or the RTM into any budget deliberations, and if there are need to be made massive adjustments, if there's everything that they need extra funding, we could adjust to it. So I will be in favor of the motion, and thank you for everyone's work on this.
Counsel Bordalyn.
Yeah, thank you. So what's tracking the calls? Is it just the 911 system? Is it a database? Like, how is that, that information?
Yeah, there's a database, 911, for how many calls.
So that goes out of the database?
Yeah. And just for instance, you know, you heard a couple, in the previous year or two, it was 5,500. Groton Ambulance for this year is already at 5,678, so they're easily on track for the 6,000 calls for next year.
Okay, that's all I have to give.
Counsel Rusk?
I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you to Mystic River Ambulance, and Groton Ambulance, and Mr. Holdsworth, for coming together and really being very open on this discussion, and wanting to find an equitable way to fund the ambulances. I think there is so much information that we learned that, that I had no idea. And I don't think that many of us knew that when, when we were presented it, and they present it, and, but by the end of a whole budget hearing, we've heard so much information that I don't think we really hear it. So if you have time, please review the, the Public Safety Committee meetings about it, there was just a lot of information. But I just want to say thank you to them very much for all of their time, that they spent.
Just, just to add, I can tell how well they worked together, the two services.
Yes.
All right. So let me just ask very quickly, so the flat rate you're saying could fluctuate differently for each fire depart, I mean, ambulance company, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, they have different cycles for when they do new union contracts, which would adjust, yeah, it could just, it could be slightly different each year, yeah.
Okay. But also, if they came in with a number, just say they had their own flat rate, the council could change and adjust it to what we would, like, even to be equitable, to say, we're just paying on calls, we're paying both $60 flat fee, and...
All this does is tell me what to put in for the first beginning number.
Right, okay, thanks, I appreciate that. And I would like to say that, like the fire department pilot money, this work is a solution. And I'm so proud of the work that the council has been doing to come to working solutions that are supported by actually the organizations that it's affecting. I mean, I thank you so much for taking on my, like, my referral, and taking care of it, and I'm, I'm very happy that you've come to this resolution with it, and, and, you know, there have been just debates for so long about how to, like, even when it comes to the budget, having discussions over ambulance, and trying to figure out the equitable way of how to actually fund them, and trying to figure out what the right number is, and I, I used to feel that there were a lot of feelings involved, but now I feel like this is a formula involved that can give everybody a direction. And I'm very happy that we are on this path. Thank you. And thank you for everybody who's on that committee. All right, seeing no other hands, we're going to take a vote on 2025-91, I mean, 91 EMS Funding Policy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, Abstentions. Passes seven to zero to zero. Up next is Open Agenda Items. This is 2025-95. I do have a few questions on this, so I hope you don't, somebody doesn't call it, adjournment. So, Mr. Burt, can I ask you, like, can you give us a very quick update, basically on the priority list, and tell us where some of these stand?
Sure. Beginning from the top, priority list, number one priority was the Connecticut Veteran Service, it says there, Service Director position, but the VSO position. I did, I worked with the COG to reach out to other member municipalities, to see if there was interest in any kind of sharing of a position. I just heard that the, there may be some interest from New London's, the person that provides the service there, so I need to reach out to them and check into that. The Human Resources Director is looking at a, at a job description we have a couple to look at, I just, it might, you know, I don't want to finalize anything till we know if where there's possible partnering up or not. So, but I do, my hope is to bring that the first cow of March, likely. Next, Mystic Parking, that's, of course, that's, the state has that task force in place with wide representation, including me and Chief Osaro, has people from Stonington, like, first select woman, Cheeseborough, some of them on there, they're wrapping up their work soon, I don't know if which will come out of it, honestly. There's not, there's, there's not a, a silver bullet for this, but we'll see what comes out of it.
And also with downtown Mystic Parking, we've also instituted...
The ticket.
Ticketing and...
The automatic tickets, yes, that's been very helpful in our, we've greatly increased the number of tickets issued. And then I think it'll help more as we hopefully do the increase in the parking fines. Next up, Sutton Park, that's a process, you know, that's all been approved, it's just, you know, they just received their, they've received inland wetlands approval, and they believe they just received their planning zoning commission approval. That's for everything, including that separate project for the restrooms there, which was partially us, partially state grant funding. So that's, there's no further action needed from the council on that.
We're just waiting construction now?
Yeah, just waiting construction, yes. Let's see, Community Recreation Events, that's been a bit of a challenging issue in terms of finding staffing. We've had a lot of turnover in parks and rec, we've not had a steady person for more than a few, for very long in that. And sometimes it's been one person moved up to a, you know, what they would consider a higher position in another department, and so, you know, it's still a goal, but we do not have a person in that position right now to do that, so I'm not, I can't say when that's actually going to take place. NIPs, miniature bottle funding, when we, if you recall, we had some preliminary information from Director Hanover, it was decided to use some of the NIP funds to fund the, that mini-vac, and so we were told, basically do that first, and then come back as you have time to do this, so Greg's working on that. I need, you know, obviously, we've talked about affordable, affordable housing is the next one, we've talked about some of that as part of our process for selling the old schools. I need a little more direction for anything else the council may want, so I'm kind of waiting for direction on that. Short-term rental process that was put on hold until the lawsuit with, at the state, not our lawsuit, that, the other lawsuit at the state, which did complete. Now, in the meantime, the planning zoning commission, we had originally requested they hold up on any action they took, so it could be coordinated with the council. They decided to move forward, people seemed pretty happy with those results, so I'm, I'm not sure if any further actions needed or not, I'm just waiting for direction. Funding of weather-related resiliency, I'd say the biggest thing right now going on is that $300,000 grant for the Climate Action Plan that's underway. Once we have, we'll have to see, no matter what, we're going to need the data to know, because whether it's the federal government paying for things, or us paying for things, we're going to need some of that information for next steps, so it'll be worthwhile, but I'm not super counting on federal funds any time in the next four years on that. Community Center Decision, I'm going to bring what I, so that'll be a little bit of the discussion on bonding I'll bring forward as part of the Athletic Fields Task Force, some point that deserves its own, you know, night of discussions, and see what we want to do with that.
I don't think this council has had the full presentation on the community center.
Yeah, we do it every now and then, I always forget when we, so we'll do that. Solar Array Transfer Station, if you remember, you had, did give the preliminary approval. It's a very big project, we've, we're negotiating the lease with the company. The one snag is, there's a little more leeway on waiving property taxes for a smaller project. We're trying to figure out if we can actually waive the taxes for this larger project. If we can't, that model might be blown, so we have to see if we can work through that, because the anticipation was, we were not going to collect taxes on that. If we do, it may not make sense to that company to do it. So Mary Gardner is working with, Mary Gardner's our assessor, she's working with attorney Eric Callahan, to try to work their way through that, to figure that definitively out. They're working with the attorneys and for the other, for the outside solar company. Let's see, the rest of our committee referrals, did you want anything else?
How about the new referrals? Can you give us some?
New referrals, Grand Heights, that'll be on the next agenda for, next week, for February 11th, we'll have an executive session for that. Pleasant Valley, that first meeting is next Monday to, you know, the RFPs were due recently, the first meeting of the Proper View Committee is next Monday. So I anticipate if all goes well, the next six weeks or so, maybe there'll be another recommendation for that. Town License Plate Logo Process, this was Counselor Merritt's request, that'll be on, actually, next week. That's a pretty easy one, that I'm fully in support of. That's it for now.
May I ask you, for the referrals, what about Espy Baller? Do you have a timeline?
I need to call a meeting together, I'm glad you reminded me of that. The first, next step is re-bringing back the TOPE for another meeting, I, I'm going to, which is my committee, I will get that scheduled.
Point of information? Your question? So do I have to, like, send a referral for Athletic Fields to be able to get onto this list, or is this something tonight that we can just move on here, or how do we, what are we going to do to get it on this list as a priority?
Council already directed me to come back with more information, it's automatically on, so we've already done it.
So we're going to add it to the list as a priority?
Yeah, yeah, probably the first also cow in March.
And it'll be added to this list as a priority?
Yeah, yeah, we can add.
Counsel Gajewski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just for information for the council, another new referral was the Jimmy Carter Peace Garden, that we had a discussion at last, since I spoke with Mr., I'm blanking on his name right now, but I spoke with him, he is more than willing to come to the council to do a presentation. I will get you the information tomorrow.
I'll add that on to the referral list, too.
All righty.
Listen, adjourn.
Listen, adjourned by Bordalyn.
Very good.
Seconded by Merritt. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, Abstentions. Passes seven to zero to zero. All right, have a good night, everybody.